Okay, at this time, if anyone would please stand. If you want to give an indication and play allegiance. Commissioner Shulman is going to do the indication.
Big honor, we just thank you for the privilege of being able to gather this morning. We have a civic group on this beautiful day and just ask that you will encourage all of us to listen with open minds and to make decisions that will be in the best interest of all people of Gates County and of your kingdom. We ask this now to help us all be able to pass along the many blessings that we have to someone else we meet along the way this week. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
At this time, I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the Gates County Board of Commissioners for May 2nd, 2018. And our first item of business is approval of amendments for our special meeting on September, I mean, on special meeting on April 2nd, 2018, and our regular meeting on April 4th, 2018. Do I have a motion concerning amendments?
I'm sure I'll make a motion that we accept amendments as noted with the noted directions of this meeting.
Okay, motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made, Department of Assembly. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, at this time, we will take a look at agenda. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? I do have a couple under new business, a resolution, number 15, add a resolution for Will and Edward Carroll. And under act of closed session, we will have a work session on the codification of ordinances. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as adjusted?
Some who.
Say aye.
Motion made, it's been made, Department of Assembly. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the first one is Thomas Hill. I'll remind everyone that it's on the list that we have a five-minute limit to address your comments to the board and then give up your name and address.
Good morning. My name is Thomas Hill. I am a resident of Corpeke here in Gates County. I'm also the Republican Chair of the county as well as the First Congressional District. I've come before you today with lots of concerns. I can certainly talk about in 2016 how the residents shut down the proposal to raise our taxes. I could talk about the way that you all raised our taxes anyways. I could certainly talk about how you all gave yourselves a favor. But I think for the hearing now, we'll save that for after primary. For the hearing now, I'd like to talk about what happens with you all this last meeting. It was said that the Republican Party has something to do with the PETA situation out here in Gates County. Let's address that. First off, I don't have a problem with the hunters and having their hunting homes. I don't have a problem with free speech. However, I do have a problem with lying to the residents of the county. First off, I understand that Mr. Webb, the former sheriff of the county, came up and made some comments blaming the Republican Party and members thereof about emails. I find it kind of strange when Mr. Owens himself has been sent emails back and forth. And if there is a denial, of course, we can do a frame of information request and run that to life and to the public. My next question would be, why hasn't this been talked about? Now, of course, the county has bigger fish to fry than animal issues. We have issues that was just talked about prior to these comments, taxation raises that's not deserved. And of course, Mr. Owens here will be getting good healthcare after his third term that, again, the taxpayers will be paying for. Perhaps he would like to make some comments after I'm done speaking on that. So I just wanted to set the record straight. The Republican Party had nothing to do with PETA. I wanted to make sure that I was able to see everybody.
That's your remarks to that point.
My remarks were to you, however, my comment is to the general public. So in either case, I wanted to make sure that we had total transparency in this shadowy situation. So before I leave, and I yield back my time. Mr. Owens, would you like to comment, sir, on your free healthcare that you'll be receiving or the taxation that's being raised or your involvement with PETA and the emails thereof or perhaps your pay raise?
Madam Chairman, would you like me to respond to your question?
I have five minutes, sir. I yield my time. You use the answer.
You use your five minutes right now.
I'm under my five minutes.
I'll respond at a later time today.
Look forward to it, thank you. I yield back my time, thank you.
Good morning, good morning. How's everybody this morning? My name is Adrian Omer. I live in 163 Gatlin Road. I have a problem on Gatlin Road, but I'm very, I'm sure that you all can sound right now in a few minutes. I snow must all ready, say yes. What it is, is Gatlin Road don't have a fire. And I would want, I'm wondering, how come, or can we, or why don't you give us a fire hydrant? On a mile and three tenths, we have 27 houses on Gatlin Road. We also have, I think it's three tenths of a mile, there's no houses left. That's at the end. But if we have a fire there, big wind come up, we could very easily set off about four different homes. And I'm quite sure that this county would have to answer to something or someone if they don't have any fire. So that's one of my major problems for coming here this morning. And I'm busy, I'm looking for all of you to say yes, and I will take care of this problem for you. Because it is a dangerous problem. It's not really not a funny, a problem to really be bad there. Because I said everything with a joke most of the time. But this is no joke. We need fire hydrants. And I don't know the reason that we don't have one there at the stand. My next problem, I have about three small ones. I won't last, I'm not gonna last five minutes up here. The drainage, all the drainage on my property and the other properties on Gatlin Road is coming from the county. If you get the drains, you drain this water out to the ditches where it's supposed to be going to the swamps where it should be going, we won't have a problem. But my land is getting probably flooded, it's probably flooded every time a big storm come. Not only mine, it's 80% of the houses on Gatlin Road. I wish somebody would really look at that problem for me because Mr. Williams ago, he's been helping, come down and clean the ditches. But we gotta get the ditches cleaned so they drain off at the end of these storms. And I'm talking about the second day. We won't go by first day, at least in two days, it will drain back to the swamps. My next problem is, it's not a problem. I've heard that from the middle school. I don't know how that project is coming along and what bothers me, I don't see nobody out there working. I'm quite sure he's in the bag working though, but I don't even see nobody. My last release. What can you do about the paving the roads? These roads are like washboards after years. They end up Gatlin Road, every once in a while I have to stop and see if we got a flat tire or what's going on. But it's just the bumps in the road. And that's the end of my problem. And I hope y'all have a nice day. And I'm really looking forward to you all saying yes, yes, yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Norman. Speaking of the two and four, the drainage and paving the roads, we have been in discussion with DOT and they, we had their representatives here at Delaware and talked to them about drainage across the county. It's just not Gatlin Road in the Humper too, we have problems as well and everywhere else. As you can have noticed, they are going down roads now with the big, whatever you call it, thing, the scoop out of the ditches along the highways. But they're only doing like along the highways. They're not doing ditches that go to the swamps. At paving roads, we have allocations from DOT that they have a system or plan that they use them on in the road. You know, we know what roads would be done come year. But you know, the wonders of this, in the last few years, all this freezing and falling and all that are in bad shape, I agree, but they are like washboards going down those. But we don't have any control with DOT. We have requested drainage, or something like that. We have topped them by operating as well. So we'll, we'll try and get them to be more proactive. But it is a problem across the state. And they, their funds have been cut, their personnel has been cut as well. Middle school, I will just say that we, they, we have a meeting with the LGC concerning funding coming up in July, like financing that. So that is, you know, the project's still going on.
We don't see nobody.
Well, it's got to get that funding, you gotta pay for it before you put much.
You didn't get, you didn't get over five or six million dollars, so they didn't give us that?
No.
I thought you said two hundred.
We have two and a half.
Two and a half.
So that's all we got to do.
We gonna burn that up?
No, sir, you cannot spend any of that money until four financing packages are ready by state.
Oh, so it haven't been, it haven't been approved yet?
No, sir.
So nobody's working? That's why I haven't seen nobody.
Well, there's some preliminary things done, or, I mean, they're in the drawing. I think bills will be going out concerning projects and, or the architect's office.
I know, I know. I've been coming down here, quite truthfully, and I thought, I thought it was already rotated. No, okay, that's my mistake. I didn't hear nothing about fire.
And the fire hydrant, I'm not sure, is that the water department or the?
Gatlin Road only has a four-inch main that goes through, which does not allow a fire hydrant for active firefighting. They're primarily just flushing hydrants that go in. There is a good hydrant at the end of Gatlin Road, when you come out and take a right towards 32, right there, the corner of the first brick house that is within.
Oh, that's a path for one of them. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Then you got the other two hours, or I forgot, we just want to talk to further. Oh, okay.
Will, I must pitch that to come up here since it said that last could be poured by all.
Recorded.
Yeah, recorded.
You don't want to repeat the requirements for putting?
In order to have a active fire hydrant for fire protection, it has to be attached to a six-inch main or greater. The service main through Gatlin Road is a four-inch main. At the 32 end, within a quarter of a mile of into that road, there's an active hydrant of Zion Road where it comes, where Gatlin comes into Zion. And then within, I think it's about 400 yards of the other end of Gatlin Road, there's a active fire protection hydrant. So there's a hydrant within reach on both ends. And the fire, fire departments in this county are set up off of pumping hall with dump tanks so they have the ability to haul water and keep supplied water on the fire scene.
I hear what you're saying. I understand what you're saying.
Because our system is not set up where you can pull off of a hydrant to pump water to a fire. If you tried to drive off a hydrant of the clefts, our PVC pipes, then no one would have water. They're, they're set up off of, the fire departments have a thousand gallons on every pump truck as well as a tanker truck that has anywhere from 2,800 to 3,500 gallons and a dump tank that will hold that water. So you would set up, the truck has an initial thousand gallons of salt fire protection. The tanker would set the tank, dump the tank, an additional 3,500 gallons, and mutual aid would constantly shuttle water and keep that tank full.
Don't sound safe. I understand what you're saying.
And unfortunately, that's how rural departments operate throughout the United States.
So even on two or three houses burning at one time?
Yes, there are multiple departments who will respond.
Got to check my, where's Sister Lane at? Is she not in there for anything? Not my tax man. You better, if tax that way playing, we don't need to go through all that, I don't think so.
But it's a waste, the work system, I mean, it's a waste done in counties, what's shown on the moments.
And believe not, you're in Sunbury Fire District. Sunbury Fire District has an insurance rating of a seven, which is better than a lot of paid departments. So that lowers your homeowners because that department is so efficient for rural areas. Give you, put it in perspective, the lower the number, the better the rating. City of Suffolk's rating is a eight.
Okay, I'm not asking all these questions because I'm just being nice.
Right. I'm just trying to answer your questions.
Thank you.
Okay. The head of what Timmy said, he pointed out that we are in water hall, sister hall of the departments in the county all. And with any structure file, there are at least two departments called at the same time. Sometimes three or four, depending on what it is. But always be two responding. And I don't know exactly what Sunbury's capacity is. If you, when we respond, just for us, we'll be carrying eight tires of the hour of water comes. And then second part, we'll be coming in with something, similar, similar amount. And there will be a constant flow of water at all times with the other departments responding. So it's probably more efficient than the hybrid would ever be. Okay. I was, okay. Will you help me out?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. We have Reva Green-Holly and Ms., Anne Holly?
Yes.
Okay.
Good morning, Reva Green-Holly, 165 Sand Road, Gates, 20938. And I'm here representing the Gates County Agent Task Force and specifically the Senior Center Committee.
Good morning, I'm Aunt Jeanette Holly, at 3:0629, Junior Road, Tiner. Currently the Director of Gates County Department of Social Services, the Chair for the Gates County Agent Adult Services Task Force slash Secretary. Greetings. And this morning, we are here, there was a memo sent to your attention dated April the 27th regarding a request, a fund for fundraising support. And the Senior Center Committee have been providing information to the Board of Commissioners, probably since, what, 2015. So we are now at a point that we're ready to move forward, but we know we have to have a means of supporting ourselves and the initiatives. And one of the initiatives that focuses on a senior center, but we must have funds. So Mrs. Reva Green-Holly has served on the Senior Center Committee and can elaborate a little bit more.
If you recall that on, at your Commissioner meeting on November 4th, you got this lovely notebook that gave you all the details about funding a senior center in Gates County. And I would like for you to pull it out and dust it off as you look at your appropriations for 2018, 19, to at least start looking at other ways you could set aside pockets of money toward the project. We know schools have issues, the courthouse has issues, but Gates County is made up predominantly now of baby boomers which need this service. It also supports the senior games, which this year you have an increase of participants from this county higher than you've ever had before. And we want to thank you for the support that you give that. But there are a lot of other programs that our seniors could be participating in if we had a senior center. In addition to that, they have charged, we were trying to do some fundraising for the senior center. As we discussed in our committee, the activity that we might want to do runs into additional problems. One, any funding, any fundraising we do is representative of the county, since this is a committee approved by the county. And right now, we have no place in the county to hold a activity unless we have liability insurance, et cetera. The community center no longer allows the public to use it without following the school guidelines on liability insurance. So if we do fundraising, we would like the commissioners to look at working out the logistics for us to be able to use facility. Preferably, we would like to use a performing arts building. And also, with that comes the fee for the building, the liability insurance, the rental, the janitor and security fees. Also, the activity we are trying to do, which they asked me to do, fashion shows, as all of y'all know, I did those for 30 some years here in the county. There is a little startup fee needing, and so we estimated about $500 for incidentals to get props, things of that nature. Most of the other stuff would be in county volunteers helping. So our request today is, one, that you revisit your senior center notebook and start looking at possibilities of appropriating funds for a senior center. Two, to provide us with $500 associated with the fundraising expense of our first fundraiser if we're able to get it off the ground, if you're working out the logistics for us being able to use a facility in the county.
Thank you for bringing this up to our concerns. Of course, it's very appropriate. We're considering budget and we'll take this under advisement when we do the budgets.
I would like to add that on February the night the Gates County Agent Adult Services Task Force met and I was tasked of contacting Gates County School Superintendent, Mr. Barry Williams. And I received a response from his administrative assistants, Miss Catherine Riddick, on April the 13th. And it says, "Mrs. Holly, Dr. Williams forwarded your email concerning the fundraising fashion show event, where you plan to have the event at one of our schools or at the community center. I have attached our policy pertaining to use of our facilities. As stated, all user groups except school sports groups must furnish a certificate of insurance. I am sure you can understand our concern over lawsuits. This policy was put into place because unfortunately, other school districts across the state have to, have had to deal with lawsuits created for non-school sports events. We have such limited funds for educating our students and we certainly don't want to use any of that money fighting legal battles. I am not aware of any exceptions for requiring the insurance, but I will certainly check with our board about this." But that poses another barrier for the Gates County Agent Services Task Force because venue, would we have to go outside of Gates County where we have taxpayers to find a place to even raise money to help benefit the residents or the citizens of the county? So that is a barrier as well.
And it's not just us, it's many citizens in Gates County that wants to hold a function. We are prohibited now from using a county building because of liability insurance. And all the years I've used other venues through extension, when you try to get that, they already have that included in their rental fee, not in addition to.
Okay. Back here, we'll take it under our bosom. We'll get the budget.
Earl Roundtree, 226 Polly Road, Sunbury. You can see some enthusiasm when I come up here. I got the first item. These are my notes and I, I came with the notes and I got to try to figure out what I'm going to say. Anyway, the first thing I want to clear up, talk to some of the commissioners and maybe Reva knows a little bit about this. But anyway, we need to clear up this swap shop thing. The Mrs. Brooks, it seems like, being most very dedicated, nice lady, but maybe she's been somewhat misled. I don't think she was purposely misled. But anyway, when the last commissioner meeting, it was, and I talked to Natalie and I called Ms. Brooks and told her that we did have permission to put one up. They were to have to work out some liability issues, but we, we need the money. And she said, "Well, what should we do?" And she said she was going to call Reva. And I don't know if she ever did. But I said, "Well, we just have to have some fundraisers to get enough money to build this thing." Well, a few days later, she called me back and said, "Well, the commissioners told her that the commissioners were going to put this up." So what I request, well, you can do what you want to, you always do, but what I suggest, maybe is the word, that Henry can see the lady's house, I don't know if he can see it over at school or not, but anyway, she's his neighbor and, but send her a letter to verify exactly where y'all stand. Does that make sense, Jack?
Well, a phone call will probably take care of it.
Well, the thing about a phone call is it's not in writing and they can misunderstand what you're saying. And that's why normally you write something down and then when they come back, they don't say that, "Well, Jack Owens told me that we were going to get it." And that letter didn't say that. And Jack can say, "No, no, no, he didn't read your letter." But anyway, y'all can do what you want to do. But I would send her a nice letter. She's a nice person. She's very dedicated. She got 500, over 500 signatures of some of the coldest letters in the world. And she brought up some good points about why we need it. But that's all I got to say about that. But I did, that was what I wanted to see taken care of. And my friend, way back here, Mr. Norman, you commissioners, I'm glad y'all answered him a lot. That's more than usually do for me. But the drainage problem, the drainage problem. And Linda touched on this a little bit, but the state a few years ago, for some, well, I do know, it was abused. It was abused. In the old days, and I, oh, so I say the old days, would cut out the ditches that drained the road. Well, it got to be abused because the supervisors, the DOT people were draining people's farms in the idea that they're draining the road. Well, like so many cases, and all of y'all see this, that you'd have a little bit of a bad problem, so they quit doing that. And we all in here got sense enough to know that if this water don't have any way to go. So our drainage problem, and I think that Jerry would probably tell you the same thing, comes from the fact that we're no longer cleaning out these drainage dishes, ditches. And you can't just go in and pull the ditches beside the road out. The water's got to go somewhere. And he brings up an excellent point. There was a lot of roads in the state and in Gates County particular. And that's, I just wanted to touch on that. I know that y'all probably know that, but now you really know it because I'm on record sale here. The other thing I came in here and made some notes on about the GOP and PETA. And I don't know exactly why. The first thing I want to touch on is the fact that Mr. Hill made it act like that Jack Owens was the only one that was qualified for insurance. Now, it might be Jack is the only one that gets it, I don't have a clue. We know Henry retired from the federal government. Billy is old enough for Medicare. Ray is old enough for Medicare. And also, he works for the county. Linda's retired state employee, so I don't know how all this works out. But Mr. Hill made it sound like that Jack Owens was the only one that was getting insurance or qualified, and I know better than that. Well, I'm going to talk as long as Reva, Reva did.
I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, don't worry about it, I'm not one of your students. So anyway, and with this PETA thing, I think that Jack Owens proved to us, proved to us the county, that he was certainly not in the pocket of PETA. And I don't- And I don't know how this rumor got started, but it was a rumor about Jack, and he stood up here and made the motion, and we put the ordinance that way it was, and there's absolutely no evidence, no evidence in the world, that Jack Owens had anything to do with Peter. But we do know that the commissioners had a packet and used that packet against us from Peter, and they, y'all asked Peter questions and wanted their support, but none of this evidence points back to Jack Owens. I came here today to give my farewell address, and Bill Harrell sent me a, you can hit me with that if you want to, but I'm not going to shut up till I finish, because this is my farewell address. But Bill Harrell wanted me to do it after May the twentieth. And the only thing I have to say is the fact that I was retiring from this because I feel like Joe DiMaggio in nineteen fifty-one retired from baseball.
Point of order, Madam Chairman, I believe it's been five minutes. Thank you.
It has been five minutes.
It has been five minutes, but I said I'm going to finish, because I'm going to talk the same way that Reba did. And I have, anyway, plus it. Ray, cover rest, Lee. All right, here we are. Y'all watch it. Thank you.
Point of order, Madam Chairman?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for being up and speaking today. Okay, a nice delegation of staff.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to address the swap shop. I do recall in the minutes where it captured the specific details of what the commissioners said they would probably avoid doing that. So you can make a available, those minutes, if you may available to Ms. Brooks, and she can see the detail of what the commissioners specified in bringing that swap shop back to town.
Thank Commissioner Jordan, they are in minutes, minutes from, thank you. At this time, we have Scott Bailey, he's going to present our audit that we have finally got done. So happy to have you.
Good morning, how are you?
Good morning.
As you said, we, I'm from Carrington, Ingram, the auditing firm for the two thousand sixteen, seventeen fiscal year. And we had that long last conclusion with our audit. You'll note that our audit is dated March twenty-ninth. And if you allow me some time, we'll just run through the audit process briefly, try to keep it at a high level, because even though it's terribly exciting, we have a long-term agenda today. And then run through a few brief financial highlights. As with any audit of a local government, our obligation was to audit the financial statements of the county in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles as well as governmental accounting principles. And we do that in accordance with our own auditing standards, so those being generally accepted auditing standards and governmental auditing standards, and there are a lot of little abbreviations there. In addition to that, because of the federal and state funding that runs through the county, we also performed a single audit under the uniform guidance under Title II, Part Two Hundred, and the State Single Audit Act of North Carolina. The county's responsibility is to implement and maintain income control over financial reporting and for the selection and application of accounting principles, and ultimately for the fair presentation of the financial statements, all the way through to the notes where it's our obligation is to audit to that. As we discussed last time I was before you, the timing of our audit was altered due to change in the engagement partner for the part of that, there's some delays, and the reason why I'm here for it in May rather than even much earlier in two thousand eighteen or in late two thousand seventeen. Our audit is designed to address these significant estimates and judgments made by the county that those are the areas that, under a risk-based audit methodology, where the majority of our work is designed to be addressed, and those include things such as estimated useful lives of capital assets, gambling for pensions, and other pension retirement benefits, compensated absences, things of that nature where they don't carry harm by cost, but a lot of estimates are involved. And so that was our primary approach to the audit. During the year, two accounting standards were implemented, these were GASB seventy-three and GASB seventy-five. GASB seventy-three affects the accounting for pensions, and these are pensions other than the state pension plan, so this affected the law enforcement, supplemental retirement, whereas GASB seventy-five affected the reserve or other pension retirement, whatever that is. We're happy to report that there were no significant difficulties encountered during the performance of the audit. We encountered no technical disagreements with management. We had no significant other findings following that bill. As part of our audit, we did identify some findings. We have those disclosure materials, and I'm happy to discuss those with you later if you would like, other than now, as my contact information. And that's the primary conduct of the audit. Are there any thoughts or comments that y'all may have to add or?
Questions? Okay.
Yes, anyway, when our audits are complete over years, and I've been sitting here for close to ten years, the audit provides us with, I'm not sure if I had the right term, but it's an unqualified or unmodified review. In other words, if there are no significant findings, you made a statement that the county's finances basically meet the requirements of the G A R P or whatever.
And that is true, that is the case for this year.
But I noticed, I did not see a statement. You have statements like, page one of our, where I would refer you for our opinion on the financial statements is a little, near the front of your materials. So our opinion is found on page seven.
Page seven.
Yes, and there we disclose that we have issued an unqualified, also known as a clean opinion on the financial statement.
At the top of page?
Yes, ma'am. Page seven. All right, where are they specified?
At the top.
Okay, but you did not use a word, unqualified.
The accounting guidance changed about three or four years ago, where unqualified was the language we used to use, and they have altered that in the A C B A document, with the two, modified or unmodified. Modified being the old qualified opinion, where we would say that the financial statements in all material respects are insistent with GAAP other than this particular issue. So that is, so that what used to be qualified is now modified, whereas now what used to be unqualified is now unmodified. So it's a slight alteration of the language based on the county guidance.
Board of Commissioners need to stay up to date with changes with the county's principles as well. I think I'll bring that to attention, because that's, that stuck out in the past, because when we send our audit reports to LGC, whatever, they will look for that unqualified or unmodified is now, before they would be able to approve us for loans or something.
Sure. And in the event that those occur, we're also required to add a paragraph to our report to explain the circumstances, rather than that usually refers back to the next where there's a detailed description of that occurrence.
Which definitely changes.
Yes, sir. If you have, if you would allow me, I'll just run through a few brief financial highlights at this time. At the conclusion of the year, what we would refer to in the, perhaps the business community, we call it the statutory net position, which translates roughly to a balance sheet. What we observed was the assets and deferred outflows for the county exceeded liabilities and deferred inflows by about thirteen point nine million dollars, which is what we consider to be the total net position. That includes a lot of different things. Usually a little more useful to the county is when we discuss fund balance, since that's what's affected by the budgetary process. At the end of the year, the combined governmental funds had an ending fund balance of five point three million. Of that amount, three point seven million is unassigned, which is, in general, your spending, amounts available for spending. We noted that unassigned amount is just shy of thirty-four percent of the governmental expenditures for the year. Just to give a good comparison there, the LGC considers eight percent sort of the minimum level before they start to ask some questions of the county, so it is very much clear of that number. We noted some slight decreases in debt due to routine debt service. We also observed that governmental fund balance increased by eight hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. This was the result of a combination of factors, partially that the county continues to improve the correction rate, ending at approximately ninety-six point six percent. There were some additional revenues that came in this year through the local option sales taxes due to the Article forty-four sales tax, as well as the county's proactive cost management that they had maintained through the years. We also observed at the state level, which was passed out to the county, property and motor vehicle tax increase, which also had an effect on governmental revenues. If we move over to the proprietary funds, this is the water and landfill funds, we observed a net decrease in fund balance. And I think what we saw was driving this was primarily reductions, or well, not reductions, but declines in landfill solid waste revenues. Those were the primary comments I had. If you have any follow-up questions, I'd be happy to take those at this time.
No additional questions? Those numbers you just told us about, they are found in which part of the report?
Through a variety of pieces. Primarily, you can observe, we've got a brief discussion, and I'll, you know, with the caveat that it's unaudited, there's a summary of it in the management discussion and analysis at the front, which kind of takes a lot of this and breaks it down. Net position figures are in exhibits one and two. The fund balance figures for governmental funds are in three through five, and the details on the proprietary funds are in six and seven, six, seven, eight, seven, eight, three, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
And I know, I know you mentioned the LGC, and they start asking questions, dropping below eight percent, but they also group you with counties your size and provide you your fund balance, and they don't want to see anything close to eight percent.
Right, that's correct.
Yeah, so it doesn't, oh, well, how much money to spend? No, we do not. Because they want, we want to stay in that, at least in the middle of the pack.
Absolutely, absolutely. One thing to keep in mind, dovetailing off that, is that the fund balance figures don't account for obligations due to pensions or long-term debt or other pension retirement benefits. So while those are the result of accumulated budgetary process, they also don't include some figures in there that are, that are an essential part of the county's financial picture.
Just one other question. Page one, ma'am. One of your findings was indirect water bills.
Yes, sir.
It's joint test controls, two of the, of a sample of forty water customers with bills with incorrect rates. Could you elaborate on that a little bit? What was the actual deficiency of where they charged you electricity bill, or just what was it?
I remember the finding in that when we reserved, or when we reviewed the rate that they were charging, they were from the rate that was actually charged, whether it was over, under, I don't recall, off the top of my head, except that it did occur. We also followed up on that finding with management to determine if this was part of a broader issue, if there were other things that needed to be taken into consideration as part of the audit, and to undo it, so we concluded that we did not need to receive it.
It is probably true.
Yes, sir.
If I could just expand on that a little bit, there's a sample of forty, your document says there's a sample of forty.
Correct.
And there were two examples, and while one or two or three need to be corrected, whatever, it wasn't something massive. There's, the sample, it was just.
Correct, that's correct.
And Madam Chairman, I did want to state for the, for the camera that on page fifteen, when I was looking at the report, and I highlighted at the bottom the finding of that major capital assets transactions during the year, that we, gentlemen made comment that we did, we did have some debt set off during the calendar year, which is good, even though we had these, these major purchases down here, pumps at the water plants, improvements to our county buildings, new vehicles and the nine and eleven emergency facility, and with a little of that, we're still able to have some reductions in debt set off during the year.
Correct.
So, that's for the audience.
Thank you for coming, and if we have any questions, we will contact you if we go through the budget, the budget this year.
Please do, and thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, we'll move on to administrative reports. First, it's the county manager.
This is for March twenty-fourth through April sixteenth. Due to unforeseen complications with the rooftop unit venting and the downspouts not having cleanouts as proposed, the final inspection of courthouse group has not occurred. We are working to have everything finalized by the end of May. With the fiscal year seventeen audit being completed, conversations with Davenport regarding financing of Central Middle School has resumed. Sheriff Hofford, Jody Hoffman, along with Ted Cole from Davenport, will meet with the local government commission on April twenty-sixth. And like I said, this was reported through April sixteenth, but since there have been questions, we did attend that meeting, and it was not with Ted Cole, it was with Mitch Rupli, with Davenport, and two people from the local government commission. We reviewed all the information that we had from the audit, and they asked a few questions about the project, and we are on the agenda for the July tenth meeting. Cotton Gin Road DOT update. Cotton Gin Road has been graded several times by DOT to assist with pondering on the road. DOT has said the road had not been paved due to a family not signing the right-of-way papers for paving. The road will be maintained as needed, but DOT is not sure at this time how often that will be due to anticipated budget issues with dirt roads. Work is progressing with the wastewater project, and there's actually a meeting today at one o'clock with those who are involved in that project. The West Wing Historic Courthouse has obviously been torn down, and as of this morning, they are working to begin digging the footers. All departments and outside agencies have submitted budget requests, and the fiscal year budget is being finalized for presentation. The Tri-City County Animal Shelter met on March the twenty-eighth to discuss shelter operations and building plans. The shelter is looking for a director. The expansion- and building plans. The shelter is looking for a director. The expansion plans for the animal shelter are being finalized. Torn County is responsible for putting the project out to bed and hopes to do so in May or June. And actually, as of this morning, they are going to put the RFP out this Friday. April the eleventh, JCPC met to approve funding for fiscal year nineteen program. Genesis and alternatives for youth were approved for full funding request. And Kristi Fireman and I attended the advanced FMLA training the school of government offered in New Bern on April the twelfth and thirteenth. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Next is the tax office.
Good morning to you all. Had the opportunity to review the record report from the month of April. Any particular questions for the month, a little over sixty-six thousand collected for the month of April? Some of those folks that received our insurance have come in and paid us a visit, of course. And the foreclosure letters are due next. That is, our next day is a process for, for those people, two years or more delinquent. Those letters will be generated in-house and be sent out. I did want to point out, we do see Ellis Law line item. We did receive a payment, if you will, funds collected payable to the county. Of course, Ellis Law, we, we've closed all accounts, and that has been paid. So that actually goes into the fund for the county, because we've already resolved all those payments, probably some back in fourteen or fifteen, if all those collected that. That was an account that Ms. Chavis reminded me, there was ten years of more delinquency. So quite a bit, we got that resolved. And those, those funds are actually going to the county. So I just wanted to mention that and see that come through.
And I see Zakias, we got a flat ice and dollars from
Yes, ma'am.
back taxes twice a month.
Yes, ma'am. Our collection rate, as we move towards, starting May, we're, we're striving ahead, a little bit higher than we were naturally last year. I think all to reveal that, we're plugging away. And like I said, foreclosure letters and do much to, to invite those people to come out and pay sixteen and seventeen if they have to do.
And we're working to see what can be done by those who have delinquent ten years.
That is correct. I will mention to the board, I did have the opportunity to speak with Zakias, Mark Bardeel, on yesterday. He is going to pay a visit to Gates, May fifteenth or sixteenth. We've, we've not determined that day yet, to discuss what can be done with some of these older accounts. Is serviced by publication an option with some of these that are in the estate, if you will, or air property, difficult titles, I'll mention. They seem to be not stagnant for a while, but for that reason, you know, covering all bases. Will be in town discussing that. What are the options? What parcels can we target? And what is the cost? What is the benefit naturally to the county? Because he, you know, he works for the county naturally. We'll put that in mind. So I just wanted to mention that. Chair.
Thank you.
I would like to mention, on those ten years, those that are, you know, six, seven, twelve, ten years. The citizen did quiz me on that recently, about the last two weeks. And I shared with them things that you had shared us about the difficulty with getting to paperwork to all of the people whose names are on the deed, and they're here and there, and the difficulty with that, and as well as the cost, and things of that nature. So I would love to hear the results of that meeting with Zakias.
Absolutely. I'll have a more veteran form report after that. Sursted by publication is a method often used. Some of these counties do NREM and house foreclosures. You just want to be careful that you, you're, from a technical legal standpoint, that all is, that process is complete. So that, that is an option. We'll have a better understanding. I'll certainly report, I'll find a chapter in the board after that meeting.
Okay, because of quite a few.
Yes, indeed. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions? Here are no thank yous. Do we have, okay, any old reports from any departments? Hearing or seeing a new one coming up, a couple of just articles of interest. The Northeast SCAR is going to have a
Search and rescue.
Search and rescue, thank you. A training session this week on Thursday through, I mean, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Commissioners are invited to attend on any time, any time during those days. But please give Billy Wynn a call if you're planning on attending. And also, next Thursday night is a kickoff. You receive invitations to the three hundred fiftieth anniversary, the event being held at Museum of Avalon. I think you had RSVP. I've got one today, it was, the ten, okay. Okay. We have no public hearings today. We have no old business. We'll get down to new business. Do we need to take a break, a stretch break?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we'll take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back to our new business. Okay. At this time, at this time, we will move to new business very quickly. Okay, I would like to ask our fellow commissioners if we can move the proclamation for, or the resolution about William Haywood Carroll to the top, to kind of help families, someone that's returned to work, and we'd like to do that exactly. Okay, I believe we have a resolution in memory of William Haywood Carroll. If a family would like, first of all, we need to approve it, and then we'll ask families to come up and present it to them. Commissioner Owens, would you like to read the proclamation resolution?
Madam Chairman, it would be my honor to read this resolution. Resolution in memory of William Haywood Carroll. Whereas it is with deepest regret that the Gates County Board of Commissioners acknowledges the death of William Haywood Carroll, who departed this life on Sunday, April fifteenth, two thousand eighteen. And whereas William Haywood Carroll was sworn in as a Gates County Board of Commissioner in December of nineteen ninety-four, and served through December of two thousand six. And whereas, in conjunction with his service as a commissioner, William Haywood Carroll served on numerous boards that covered a wide spectrum of the county appointed boards. And whereas, William Haywood Carroll was a dedicated public servant who devoted much of his time to his community. And whereas, William Haywood Carroll will long be remembered, not only for his devotion to his constituents during his tenure as a commissioner, but also for his dedication to representing all Gates County residents and providing them a more effective voice in the decision made for and on behalf of Gates County. Now, therefore it be resolved that the Gates County Board of Commissioners hereby memorializes William Haywood Carroll, as we remember him for his dedicated public service, his many contributions to, and deep affection for, all citizens of Gates County. And be it further resolved that this resolution adopted this second day of May, two thousand and eighteen, shall be entered into the minutes of the Gates County Board of Commissioners, and a copy presented to the family of William Haywood Carroll. And so it will be signed by our Chairwoman, Linda Harper.
Okay. Give me a resolution from the board.
Madam Chairman, I'll make your motion that we adopt the resolution, if we, for William Haywood Carroll.
You second the motion. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
At this time, I'd like for the Carroll family to come up, so that we as a board can present it. We got to be the second one, I guess. Watch the boards. If you don't want anybody to follow. On behalf of the Gates County Board of Commissioners, I'd like to present this to Mrs. Farrell and her family, in recognition of her passion and their role of contribution to the county. It certainly was a dedicated public servant, and I would ask many more like me. And we appreciate you coming. And I would like to Thank you so much. Okay, I believe we have a couple of budget amendments. The first one deals with grant.
If you would like, you can read all of these. One, budget amendment twenty-seven is to reallocate funds to cover a contract, so the tax office will continue to have access to the Keystone Bay data base through November of two thousand and eighteen. Amendment twenty-eight is to reallocate funds to cover a three-year contract for Panda three sixty-five, which is an antivirus for all the computers, for all of the computers. Budget amendment twenty-nine is to budget for the wastewater, wastewater facility project. We do have a shortfall based upon the amount of, the amount of the final bids. So that is the amount, half will come from the general fund, half will come from the sewer and water for the enterprise fund. Thirty is to reallocate funds to part-time salaries for the inspections department. Thirty-one is to reallocate funds from the capital outlay to maintenance for a shortfall with the telephone service agreement. This agreement was not in place because this is for backup PSAP center, and this capital outlay is actually, excuse me, this is actually money that is already in our system, so it is not a new general fund balance removal. And then twenty, excuse me, thirty-three, which you have before you today, is to appropriate money from fund balance to the roof project for this building due to a cost overage to make and install the ductwork for the HVAC venting system.
Okay. And so we can do this all at once?
Yes.
Okay. So we have amendments twenty-seven through thirty-one, and then thirty-three. Do I have a motion?
So move, Madam Chairman, for the budget amendments, starting at twenty-six, and then through thirty-three, excluding thirty-two.
It's twenty-seven.
First, first one's twenty-six, I have.
The first one I have is twenty-seven.
It'd be twenty-seven. That was, that is the one from the minutes page.
Okay.
Because there's the signature at the bottom.
All right. Now, amend that to be twenty-seven through thirty-three, excluding
That is
Yeah, that is, that's, sorry. Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second, Madam Chairman.
Okay, a motion has been made. Second question. And I'd like the nine-one-one, the state is now requiring us to have a backup. Correct. And that is a state department that's come into being in the last few years. Okay. Any additional questions? And the vending for the roofs, I would get ready for the four eyes, three.
One question on the water department. Again, if part of those ones comes from Joe's fund balance, what about our work fund balance?
Half of it comes, what has, has been traditionally done based upon budget movements, because this is the first one that we've had to do since I came on board of this side. All of the costs were being split between the general fund and the enterprise fund. So four hundred eighty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars is coming from general fund, and four hundred eighty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty will come from enterprise fund.
This is, now what about our, our grant?
This is needed in addition to all the grant money that we have, because of the overage from all the construction and all the testing that was done on other property, that some of those things could not be covered by grant funds. Nine hundred thousand dollars from EDA and two hundred thousand from Goldenly, and seven hundred thousand from What U Speed World Center. It's now part of Commerce.
It's five thousand, possibly.
It's a little over four million dollars. In two thousand and twelve, I believe it was, I pulled it up, I believe it was twenty-five hundred dollars.
Two point five.
Yes, I'm sorry, two point five or two point nine. I have to
Remember, we can look to our devil for a piece of property and did testing.
All right.
Okay, is any additional questions? All of the questions were good. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
And the original budget was two point five.
Okay, now we have appointments to various boards, the boards that we, the first one is planning board. We have three members whose term are expiring and are eligible to return. Tyler, Ronald Taylor has informed us that he does not want to be considered for an additional term. Okay, so we have applications in the packet.
We'll be filling three slots.
It was three slots.
Madam Chairman, I'll make the motion that we replace off to, in Ronald Taylor's seat, at which he is not going to seek a second term, to place Reginald Askey.
I'll second that motion, Madam Chairman.
Okay. Because Reginald Askey has been proposed to fill the seat vacated by Ronald Taylor. Do you, is that the only thing you, motion, that's what you're doing at this, that's your motion, correct?
Yes, yes. And just as an explanation, I, what we have here is three applications that we're, we have three applications in the planning board.
Larry Yule.
All right, yes. Just for the audience, there's a gentleman named Larry Yule, one named Chris Odom, and one named Jonathan Jones, and Reginald Askey have applied for that position. Or for his position on the planning board, not that particular position.
Okay, the motion's been made. I'll take a second. Second, yeah. Second, second, yeah.
Could we have it, that would make nominations instead of motions? I would like to nominate Larry Yurek and based on him, if he's on the board inside, one of the nominations would be, would be, if I want to say.
Okay, you want to nominate Larry Yurek. There's three slots of it. There are three slots, so I evidently want to do, we want to fill one at a time. But right now, we have a motion on the floor and it's the proper second.
To a point. Reginald Askey to replace Ronald Taylor, but since we have more than one, it would be appropriate to.
Okay, what you're saying, not to designate the position he's taking. Okay, okay.
If you would nominate Askey.
Just nominate Askey to, but would you, is that your motion, just to nominate, Reginald Askey to the planning?
If I would like to nominate.
Before we open the floor for nominations, which probably would be.
Okay.
What you can do is that way you can actually do them all, and you have to nominate, and not fill out the all three seats. And then we can go on which ones.
Okay, so are you going to rescind your motion?
Well, how are we going to have it? What's the matter?
Open, each one of us could have a candidate that we may want to nominate.
Okay, we can open it to nominations and, but we still going to have to do them all at a time?
If we get, if we get, if we get three, because see, my nomination might be for somebody who already there and has submitted a second application, just in theory. If we get three nominations, we can vote on all three of those at the same time. If we get, if we get four, then we'd have to have a vote, correct? But still, if we get two, we have to say which ones we're, which positions we're nominating for.
Well, if we go down to board and each one make their nominations, that would.
This doesn't normally happen.
No, it doesn't normally happen, that's why.
To, could not only keep in there, too, but Yurek has also filed a board adjustment.
Yeah, I was going to ask that question if he didn't list two. And we, and we have a position open on that.
But there are people who have been reappointed, that you can reappoint, or you can let all new people nominate and vote in all new people for both boards. Planning board has three positions, the board of adjustment has two positions.
Board of adjustments, we only have one application, is that correct?
No, sir. According to the memo, there's three.
Three, but then one has an incomplete application.
Both are reappointed.
Well, but one of those has an incomplete application.
For both boards, there are people who are asking to be reappointed, but you have the option of all new people if you say two.
We don't have to reappoint.
Sure. Reappointment is just like any application.
And in the past, we have, sometimes we have reappointed and sometimes we have not.
Well, normally, the, the seat would be that the board would make their nominations and then all those in favor of this nominee.
So we're going to do it one at a time?
Perfect.
Okay.
Well, before we get, so we don't have any complications in that process, I agree with what you say. However, depending on how many nominations we get, or we have to unseat, we have to unseat someone also.
Other than the planning board.
It depends on how many nominations we get.
On the planning board, you have for reappointment, Chris Odom and Jonathan Jones, Ronald Taylor is not being considered, so we're replacing Ronald Taylor.
So it could be replacement after.
Could replace after.
So that's what I'm saying.
But do we have, we don't have application involved?
Well, you have the.
Yeah, we got four applications.
All that water gets too muddy, I'm sorry.
Okay, so have we agreed that we're going to do it one at a time?
I think it would be.
Okay, so we have a nomination for Reginald Askey for the planning board, that is the properly second. Not saying whose seat he's taking, correct?
Well, we don't, we don't need a motion.
Just make a call. Just make a call.
Yeah, we have to agree on the, on the nominations. So the floor is open for nominations?
Okay, the floor is open, so we have a nomination for one.
I have a nomination for Larry Yurek.
And we got two.
Madam Chairman, I move the nominations to be closed.
We got to have three for the planning board. But this is, you're doing it one by one.
Okay, we're doing it one by one, okay. One by one. Okay, nominations have been made, three, probably just second, so all we'll do, how many, we'll have to do this by short hands.
I don't understand what we're doing. We're doing one by one, man. You know, no matter which one of these, one gets three votes, because that eliminates that. We're trying to mix things up here, it should be very simple.
I would think we nominate, I don't know.
Well, if we want to nominate the three to three, we still going to have to do it separately. If I can, I can change my nomination from, to Chris Odom, Larry Yurek, and Jonathan Jones. That would be the three that I would nominate for the planning board.
But Commissioner Felton has already said he would, would have liked to appoint Reginald Askey.
Right, but he's also, I think, said Chris Odom, Jonathan Jones, and Reginald Askey as well.
May I make a recommendation?
Okay. I don't know if this guy prefers keeping all.
This is going to simplify that. The three people who are on the sheet of paper, who are currently serving, the three names, we just forget those names. Somebody, we're going to, we know that we have to fill three spots, so this board has got to nominate three people. Forget the names that are up here. If you want to nominate one of those people, you nominate them. And once we have our three, we vote on the three. In other words, we vote on the collection of the three nominees.
Okay. Does that, everybody agree today? Your time?
Ray, who is your question? Who's your nominee?
That's what you didn't agree on.
Well, you don't have to have a second to vote on it yet. Madam Chairman, I'm going to make the seat down. I'll nominate Chris Odom.
Okay.
We have three of them.
Okay, so we have Chris Odom.
Reginald Askey.
Reginald Askey.
Larry Yurek.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, I move the nominations to be closed.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Okay. We have Chris Yurek, Mayor of the County, Larry Yurek.
Chris Yurek.
Moving to the board of adjustments, we have.
Was that the nomination or the town?
We need a, we need a motion, I mean, accept those three.
Okay.
I move we set the three names that were just approved to second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. That seems to be redundant.
Now, the second one, you only have two people because the third applicant was just appointed to the planning board.
One of those has an incomplete application.
That's up for you to make that decision. He is currently serving.
And he was over at that.
First one, second, or third?
One, second.
Second.
So I mean, we can do one, whatever.
Chairman, the floor was open for nominations.
Correct.
Chairman, I'll nominate Willie Hopple.
Okay, do I have any other nominations?
Mr. Timmy Williams is still on hold, right?
Correct.
Now nominate Timmy Williams.
Two positions?
Yes, we got two positions.
Madam Chairman, I move the nominations to be closed.
Okay. Do I have a second? Oh, absolutely. Okay, my amendment's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Okay, do we have a motion to appoint these?
Madam Chairman, I move that we appoint the two nominations for the, two positions of the board of adjustments.
The second is been made, all those in favor say aye. All those for Timmy Williams and Willie, Willie Earl Hopple are being reappointed to the board of adjustments, say aye. All opposed. Okay, those appointments have been made. Next appointments, to the Gates County Board of Social Services. And.
Make a motion for Commissioner Felton to attend.
Okay, a motion's been made that for Commissioner Felton to continue on that board. Okay, a motion's been made and possibly seconded. All those in favor say aye.
You didn't have to.
Do you have?
Senator B. Dunn has done an excellent job.
I ask more questions, Tom, just keep going.
Keep going, okay.
I'd like to comment.
Yes.
To the board where, generally in the past, the commissioner of appointment had been two commissions, it doesn't have to be, but in the past, we did put two commissioners on board because we wanted to be involved and know what we have to face a report on that department. So, Commissioner Felton, you served on the board until December. And he's still in service. We have to make another one.
Doesn't matter, it's important, right?
Yes.
Okay, we're going now to the commissioner's appointment to the Gates County Library Board, to the Admiral Regional, to the Gates County Library Board, the part of the Admiral Regional Helen Yurek seeking a reappointment to that board.
And I'd like to make a motion that she be reappointed, Helen Yurek, our search for a second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Okay, let's see. Appointment of a medical director to Gates County, which we have to have, the Stormy Butts has made a, we need to appoint a new medical director, take effect July first two thousand and eighteen, and we have a letter, I mean, to Doctor Wilson, and he has agreed that he will serve as our new medical director. That is part of the process, we have to have a medical director for their activities they do with the rescue squad.
For extensive provisions. For extensive provisions.
Yes. Seems to be very fortunate that we were able to get him. Okay, what is the pleasure of the board?
So move that the doctor that's recommended by our chief paramedic, Stormy Butts, be appointed as our medical director.
Okay, Doctor King to A. Wilson.
Roger.
Madam Chairman, I'll second that motion.
Yeah, a motion's been made and possibly seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to declare what is exactly the M. A. L. S. A.
The next license.
Okay, thanks.
And as a medical director, you just oversee or?
We practice under his license. He's going to be a physician at Alamo Hospital under Sotera, and he, where, he controls all of our dayless providers' practice under his license. Doctor Furia was there previously, I believe, she's right at ten years. She resigned January first to go to work for Chesapeake General, so Sotera didn't want her to remain in the, in the medical director's position, so she's been doing it in terms until July first, when Dr. Wilson starts.
Thank you.
Does this cover the coroner title? It does not, it falls under the medical examiner of the state.
Okay, thank you. A motion's been made, probably seconded, clarification of what, is that what the office is? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed. Okay, now we have a resolution supporting a statewide referendum on bond issues for school facility needs, something that we can certainly identify with. I don't know that we need to read that to hold the entire resolution, however, I'll read it at the very end, it says, whereas Gates County has school capital needs of twenty million, two hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars, whereas it's estimated that Gates County could receive fourteen million, two hundred and eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars for that shortfall, shortfall of school capital needs, and, you know, it goes on, talks about administration flow well, I mean, if the average daily membership flow well, small counties, I'll total could be the fourteen million. Certainly that would help us with our school needs. Was the pleasure of the board.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we adopt and support this resolution before, on the bond issue for school facility needs.
I'll second that motion, Madam Chairman.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. I'll, any questions?
I'd just like to state for the audience that when we go to our district meeting and talk about topics and issues, this is the one that's always the largest, school facility needs. Every county has an issue and deals with it, so hopefully it is getting the attention of the state and, and the state is aware of it, but hopefully there's enough push going on to, to cause some real dollars to flow our way. And I'm calling it.
Okay. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed. Hopefully that they will have the bond issued, that will help us create. Next item, Gates County Tyson Committee, they are requesting for additional funds for the coming year, you know, this is.
Nobody knows the coming year, this current year.
The current year, excuse me. I'm so, I'm in the budget mode and, okay. They are requesting additional two thousand dollars. To that, is anyone, Patrice, are you here to?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to, we could have a housing, I'm going there for as well, that committee. The housing committee was started by commissioners a number of years ago, and the housing committee operates through grants, they currently have a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollar grant, and it's a family rehabilitation. Also, I think we got another hundred and fifty thousand, but in processing those grants, we also get funds from various churches and businesses and whatever to try to address the housing needs of the, under the immediate account, and, but in order to do that, we also have to have a housing coordinator to go around and make assessments, obtain material, even make monitoring. obtain material, even make monetary care. We don't pay much salary, certainly gas, it covers gas, many of the expenses and so forth. And so, and you can't use any of the grant funds on that sort of thing. So, through donations, whatever, we've been able to straighten where we're at. But this year, the funds have gone significantly. The committee asked for five thousand, we brought in three thousand. And we'd like to have that two thousand, if it gets out completely this year, we can do, serve the county as, as, in products that we're currently working on right now. So I would respectfully ask, I think Mr. Langus' fund, we may be able to, we have some Mr. Langus' fund, the commissioners to draw that fund, that board, which I agree to give the housing, give two thousand dollars to finish up this year, this question here.
Okay.
Your, your, counting your year, the countryside's a lot.
Right.
Go ahead.
So this is for May, June?
This is for May, June, right.
Mr. Sommersen, is he here? He is the person who's doing the work, do you have any questions about the type of work he's doing?
Madam Chairman, just one thing Henry didn't mention. What I know is true, there's a lot of in-kind services that go along with, with that program. A lot of citizens that, that step up and do things.
And churches.
And churches as well.
Okay, Mr. Saunders, do you have anything you would like to add?
Yes, certainly do.
Okay, if you'll come to the podium. Thank you, but hopefully I have what work I'll do.
Thank you, good morning. Let me, let me just start out by saying that I've been on with the Housing Committee for about sixteen months now. There's a great need here in the county. A lot of times we hear of the grant money, the different stuff that's coming through. But there's a great need right here, right now, for the citizens in the county. And sometimes there's just situations that repair, that we can try to get to the family, can, the quality of life can be a lot, a lot better. So to go out to these homes and see these situations is heartbreaking. And when you leave home, whether who's there or not, with the families, you know, they want us to help. And we're trying our best to help. We try to, we've been sending letters to churches, we've been sending a lot to businesses. But the response has just been very, very sluggish. And which again, has made our financial situation kind of, kind of tight. So we're asking the board if they would help us with this more fund, because there's a great need out here. And a lot of it is just what I call the local help, where we can locally help families with some damages to their home. For there be five hundred, six hundred, eight hundred dollars, sometime up to a thousand. To just repair these situations and just make life better for them to live in their homes. So that's basically what I do, I do assessments when people come in and fill out applications. My job is to go out and assess the situation of what they put on application. And we, I've seen it all, the good, the bad, and the ugly. Some we can't help, some the prices are just a little more than what we could try to do. Other than through different projects and probably Patrice can explain a little bit more than I can. So there's a need, and we really need your help to put some money back into the funds. And so we can continue to operate on what we're doing.
I mean, see if you can help or.
I go ahead and, I'm gonna let Patrice address this, because she's got the numbers, from our trees.
Last numbers we, for the United House of, year two, it was sixty-seven, it counted, actually, called.
In a year or was I?
Well, I think that was over about two or three year period.
And what, what type of work do you do?
Um, it varies. Wherever, I'll just use one particular situation now, where there's a trailer, a gentleman's line. And there has to be a bad place in the floor that need to be replaced, need to be repaired. So what I, what I do, I will contact a person who, or I wouldn't say much, well, I guess it could say contractor. I am going to go out and just actually take a look at it and give us a cost of what they feel it will take, to take care of all that. So again, each, each situation is different. And I do know we've got some available funds through certain projects. But locally, there's a lot of people that we can help just repairing. And which will get them back on their feet in it. So I'm going to just yield this time, let Patrice come and yield the numbers, I'll put you guys on.
Sometimes, I think, sometimes you make little matters prepare.
Oh, yeah, we, we, what we can fix with the situation of their late ceiling fans fall out of ceilings. You have to set them fall out of walls. Sometime you can just move a wall or help move a wall or repair a couple of holes in the floor. It just makes the life, quite life better for them. They're not asking a lot, but sometimes we just don't have the, years ago, from understanding, people donated a lot of stuff to the county commission. We don't get any. Again, we send out letters to churches and businesses, responses just financially, and we're just not receiving it, so.
Right, and some of the churches do projects themselves, don't they?
And we are, we kind of work with Buell Baptist and something.
Yeah, they, like I said, you're the one in White Oaks with him.
So we try to, we're still looking at trying to fundraise this. But again, fundraising problems are a facility to do it. Think about having the preachers playing a fundraising basketball game. But again, we're told with high insurance that's requiring, you need to come into the center of the hospital. We just, we just can't afford it, so we need help all the way around.
The problem that we've seen major this year is that we've been doing things to patch people's issues. And that's been helping. However, most of the, the people that we've gone out to this year have damage in access of twenty thousand dollars. And what we're having to do is to patch their work until we can get additional funds. And that's part of a lot of problems, because we have a lot of seniors and a lot of disabled, that's who we actually help. And when we don't help them now, their problems get worse. And that's why we're trying to do the little things now, so that it doesn't lead to problems that happen now.
And is possible, I know the hurricane Matthew, any of those funds can y'all use? I mean, that might spin in it.
No, no, some of that is very specific money. And one of the grants that we, that the county does have was related, it's called disaster relief money. But it's still the housing, and they've actually identified several houses. But again, if it, if the amount unfortunately to your house exceeds twenty-five thousand or thirty thousand of it, and all of your product, you're not eligible for those programs.
And that's what we've done, we've picked projects from year after year and we've done projects linearly. And what we could have done, help people with five hundred dollars now.
Four hundred.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
What is the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that the Board appropriate two thousand dollars for the Housing Committee, I understand it's one that's payable, you know, but I'll second that motion, Madam Chairman.
Okay, the motion before us is to, to make a budgetary adjustment to the Tyson Committee with additional two thousand dollars to be used to finish height this fiscal year. From the miscellaneous line item. A motion's been made and seconded, end of discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay. The final item in new business is one that a lot of you could be, affects each one of you here, a lot of you here. Commissioner Owens, would you do the resolution?
You can't bring that resolution.
Since you were not one of these that is mentioned in those.
Yeah. Okay. Older Americans Month.
You might need to increase volume.
Yeah, well, they might give us. Older Americans Month 2018, a proclamation. Whereas Gates County includes countless older Americans to enrich and strengthen our community. And whereas Gates County is committed to engaging and supporting older adults, their families, and caregivers. And whereas we acknowledge the importance of taking part in activities that promote physical, mental, and emotional well-being, no matter your age. And whereas Gates County can enrich the lives of individuals of every age by promoting home and community-based services that support independent living. Involving older adults in community planning, events, and other activities. Providing opportunities for older adults to work, volunteer, learn, lead, and mentor. Now therefore, the Board of Commissioners, Gates County, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim May 2018 to be Older Americans Month. We urge every resident to take time during this month to recognize older adults and the people who serve them as vital parts of our community. Dated this second day of May, 2018.
Okay, what is the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt the Older Americans Month, 2018, as read.
And I'll second that motion, Madam Chairman.
Motion's been made and seconded, end of discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, for recognizing, just trying to help us old folks. And I'll, okay, settle some comments. I don't know what the definition always is. Some people say fifty, then it's sixty-five, maybe a hundred. Okay, Thomas Hill.
Yes, ma'am, when I stood earlier, I was not able, or didn't, I didn't take the opportunity, that is, to put together some Republican business right fast. As you know, we are going through the Republican primary for two very specific offices. For Senate One, Republican primaries between Bob Seibert and a gentleman from Derrick County, whose name is, oh lord, have mercy. Wow. Wow.
What's the position?
Senate One will be from Bob Seibert from Girland County, and we have a gentleman by the name of Mark Clark Twitty from Derrick County. We have a gentleman who's running for sheriff here in Gates County by the name of Brian Darrell Johnson, and another Republican by the name of Gary Ingram. And so there, those Republican primaries will be on the same day, next week on Tuesday. There is a committee also that is discussing also the offices in 2020, where I've been asked run for lieutenant governor for the nomination of my party. Before any rumors take place, I decline respectfully running for in 2020 lieutenant governor. I will however, take a look at it in 2024 and get back with Gates County. For now, we have issues that need to be solved. In 2019, I'm going to unveil the Republican business office right here in the county. Twenty acres have already been obtained for this, and we're moving forward. With that said, earlier, I've been up here talking with the chair about the budget, which is really what's on my mind now. I'm very disturbed, I'm angry, I'm livid with the budgetary, which is why I can't even recall names right now. I'm so worried about numbers. And so Jack Owens talked about numbers earlier, about hopefully getting numbers from Robin monies. And it would be nice if he would decline on the insurance that he would be getting. See, if he's elected town chair for a third time, he gets insurance from the county that we pay for him. We wouldn't pay for it. And so I'm, I'm concerned that he's going to, in spite of the taxation referendum that was shut down in sixteen, you all voted to not only raise taxes, but also raise your paycheck. And now we're going to ask money from Robin. You can't even budget the money that you were given without putting it in your pockets. So that's very concerning. I'm, I'm very beside myself with the budgetary issues that you all have and that the monies that have already been given, you have squandered opportunities, it's in your pocket. If you would simply take it out of your pocket, we, we would be better. And so with that said, it's concerning. So I'm just going to ask one question, knowing that Jack Owens did not answer any of my questions earlier. We're going to make it simpler. Mr. Owens, would you decline, sir, on your insurance that you would be getting if elected for the third time? That's my only question to you on this issue, this section of the five minutes.
I'll be answering the question later.
Wow, I see. And so we have a school that has asbestos, that's leaking, it's, it's having problems with, with our children going there. With, my daughter had certainly graduated from there, went to high school here locally. And so with all the needs that's here, plus the two thousand dollars that's already budgeted for the Housing Committee here, you, sir, are going to stick it to us residents for your free insurance. How sad. So again, you take advantage of the situation, and you take advantage of the residents here in the county to pay our taxes. And so that's an issue, that's very concerning. Madam Chairman, one last thing before I actually go. I've noticed that every time we shake hands, we have never had eye-to-eye contact. I would just simply ask that the next time that we do meet with a handshake, that we make eye-to-eye contact. I find it more polite, that's the way I do business, with a firm handshake and an eye-to-eye contact. And so with that said, Mr. Jordan, I will certainly be continuing to pray for your family. My daughter asks about your wife quite often, and we certainly pray her many blessings. And to the other two gentlemen, I certainly look forward for a cup of coffee. I am free after tomorrow. So I would like, Mr. Freeman, if you would, sir, a coffee challenge to you. Let's get together Friday, a restaurant of your choosing within the county, and let's sit down and have coffee. I have concerns. And instead, declining me for well over six years for a cup of coffee with Jack Owens, certainly we could get together and do this Friday. And so sometimes leaders have to take the position of conversating and getting things going and coming up with solutions for the county. So, Mr. Owens, huge disappointment, sir. Once again, you have taken our money and pocketed it once again. Thank you.
Okay, is anyone else, no one else has signed up for the, so some comments will go. Mr. Norman?
Yes, I didn't sign it up. I didn't sign, I'm only just a couple minutes.
Okay.
I'm trying to pick us up and pick on. So, oh my God, I can't accept you next man. Uh, all those aside. Senior citizen building, what are we doing about that? Are we doing anything about it? Can't answer the question now. There will be, I hope there will be somewhere in the near future that you will be able to answer that. We need, senior citizens need a building here. And we have this land over here, great to have, and I can't resist the states. We could build, you can't build without enough places, enough, enough buildings going out of business. Want to sell, which I don't agree with all the time, but there's, there's high prices on that building. But the seniors need something, that's what I'm trying to get down to the bottom of. The seniors need something to be able to go in and play that little bingo, their little cards, and enjoy themselves after, after reading this number four here, apartment, number fourteen here. The seniors need something. So whenever you get a chance, I don't know how you're going to answer my question, but maybe just put it in the paper and let me read. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Norman. Okay, anyone else? Okay, if you'll start with commissioners' comments, we'll start at the end of the table. Commissioner Freeman?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We certainly appreciate the involvement of all the community and all our citizens in, in bringing things forward to us. And, and we listen with, with open ears and an open heart. And thinking about not only what our older citizens are facing, but what our younger citizens are facing. So the decisions that we make based on what you bring to us are looking in your favor. So we appreciate that.
I too appreciate the attendance this morning and just the interest that our citizens throughout the county show. And we do need all of your help, all of your input, all of the communication, the help. of the communication, the help for us to make decisions that have to be made, sometimes decisions may not be popular, sometimes at all, but it should have to be made. Thank you.
I too thank everyone for being here today and coming out to hear what we're discussing regarding county business, and, uh, appreciate your support, uh, in the decisions that we make. Uh, I do have, uh, a comment or two regarding, uh, uh, Commissioners' insurance. It's in my understanding, if I am incorrect, that, uh, we provide insurance for the employees of the county, I don't think it's, it's, uh, no cost, the county pays that, it's a group insurance. And, uh, so regarding whether or not, uh, one or two, more or less, I'm not sure if that need to affect the county costs that much. Uh, and it's something that's provided to all the employees of the county. So, uh, Commissioners put in a lot of time, uh, these big notebooks, I'll tell you, it's not easy to read all the time, and anyone signed up for the, I, I wish them well, because, uh, it takes preparation, it takes research, uh, and it takes study, and we try to serve you well, and that you all appreciate the, uh, service that we provide. If I had to leave my family all this, I'd say I'd be in bad shape. Uh, thank you so much for your support and, uh, the continued, wish, want you to continue to participate in all of the gifts.
Mr. Norman?
Well, uh, I have a personal, uh, policy that you, um, you don't address everything that you hear, because, um, it, it's not fruitful, it's not helpful, uh, there are nothing in this world that divides us, you know, so we don't need more things to divide us. So one, one of the reasons I don't participate with Facebook, because, um, people don't really have to be accountable, have a responsibility for what they put out there, they can, can put anything out there, and if somebody chooses, they can read it and, and automatically think that's true, whether it is, whether it's not. And you can speak in generalizations, um, anywhere you choose to speak, certainly, uh, on the internet. And, uh, and then in a general statement, a lot of different things can just run rampant with what you wanted to say, or what you, what you want to believe about it. Um, so I issue an apology to Commissioners, my fellow Commissioners here today, for this distraction unnecessary, uh, but I will address, um, I'm going against my policy, and, and this is a one-time, a one-time thing. Uh, and I'll first say that when you Commissioners are doing a good job, five Commissioners, I'm, I'm not just speaking about Jack Owens, when you Commissioners are doing a good job, you have to hunt and dig for things to come and blurt out so you can try to get traction. Uh, so it is a campaign year, a campaign season. I have not made a phone call to PETA, I don't have a PETA phone number. I think Earl Roundtree, very passionate earlier, um, I hate that he got as passionate as he did, but he was defending what he knew to be the truth, so I wanna, I wanna thank him for doing that. Uh, so, so that's commendable. Um, but, um, in emails, you know, there, there is a freedom of information policy, you know, anyone can request to see all of the emails of all the Commissioners, you want to waste those tax dollars, go ahead, because you're gonna find that if I responded to an email from PETA, it was "thank you for your concern," and that was it. If I even did that, you would see that, uh, there were a lot of emails early on, I opened probably two or three, I saw that a lot of them were from Alaska, and California, and Colorado, and Canada, and I didn't see any responding to this, so I deleted those, I didn't open those. But if you want to spend that money, county's dollars will do that. Um, you know, we, we get a 1099 at the end of the year, so that makes us employees of the county. We've never asked an, uh, employee of the county to forego a benefit of your employment. I don't think you'll ever see that as a practice. So that is a benefit, Commissioner Jordan, I appreciate you speaking to that, uh, that's a benefit of us, sir. Uh, then a, a statement was made that we voted, uh, raised for the Commissioners, well, it's called a cost of living adjustment. When one of our employees, which we are employees, we get a 1099, when they get a cost of living increase, we get a cost of living increase. I started to calculate the other day, and then I said, nah, I'm not gonna do that. Um, I think it might have been six dollars, uh, a month or something like that, so that's, that's where we get into that generalized statement, it sounds like we increased our pay by fifteen percent, somebody might wanna believe ten, somebody might wanna believe fifty percent. But that's where you get to these generalized statements. I think I've addressed all of those, if I missed one, I've missed one by accident. So again, I want to apologize to the, my fellow members, the county manager for this distraction. I look forward to serving the people. Um, I think the people think that our Commissioners are doing a good job, uh, they tell us so in our support. And, uh, so anyway, thank you everyone for being here today, and I look forward to, uh, seeing you next month, and I look forward to seeing you in 2019, 20, 21 and 22. Please don't forget to vote. Thank you.
Once again, it's been very nice for you to attend today, it's always nice to have citizens and to find out what their concerns are, some we can address and immediately allow us to take time, uh, as, as you could tell, um, and some, some of the things we've heard before, but we are working to try to get something done about roads and drainage, uh, but it's not getting much state help as we would like. Uh, I too would say that it is an honor to serve with all of you, and we are, we have differences of opinion, but we do it civil, with civility, and we try to come out with what is best for all the citizens of the county. And the more ideas and the more diversity you have, the better off, better the decisions we have, that we make, and we continue to try to do that. I respect each of these gentlemen a great deal, and always listen to what they have to say. Um, you know, it's not easy being a Commissioner, it, it is very time-consuming to do your research and read all, but also the different, uh, meetings we have to attend. Um, you know, I taught for thirty-six years, and then sometimes I said, well, that was a thankless job. And then I became a Commissioner, and that still is a thankless job. But, you know, in, in my heart of hearts, I want to be a public servant, uh, and help, I do have the time at this point in my life to do it. Um, and so far, as I know, I still have the capabilities of doing it, uh, and I hope I can continue to serve in the future. And I just admire anyone, I apologize to Mr. Carroll, he dedicated, you know, a lot of years of his life to help the service. That's time taken away from his family and friends, from his goats that he raised, and all, uh, but we desperately need people who are willing to spend time to do the county business. Uh, and I think all of you will find that I'm very approachable, I keep a pad of paper beside my telephone, I have a person I need to call to this afternoon when I get home concerning an issue, uh, and I, if I don't know the answer, I try to find the answer. And I think each of these gentlemen do this as well. And so, um, I think we're very fortunate with the team we have, um, but, you know, we all just need to, um, be in prayer for our county, our state and our nation, and that we can all work together and move forward in all three levels of government. Okay, um, yes?
Can I just take one other?
Yes.
Uh, if it's an alternative board, if we could ask our county manager to possibly look for ways we could identify five hundred dollars to support the A.T., uh, Belt Services Task Force, uh, in pretty important fundraising.
I'm not sure if county money can be used to support a fundraiser, I'll have to double check.
Well, if you were looking to it, it's good.
Okay, but being said, um, in pursuit of, what's on our General Statute 143 dash 318 11, we need to enter into closed session concerning legal and personnel matters, do I have a motion?
No move.
Okay, motion been made as second?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're gonna take a short break, come back in five minutes. Okay, do I have a motion to come out of the closed session?
No move.
No.
Motion's been made promptly second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
At this time, we're going to go into a work session, uh, concerning a codification of ordinances, um, and we would like to thank Melissa and Lawrence for getting all this together for us, so that we can have a book of ordinances that is easy to find and make sure that we're doing what we say we're supposed to be doing. Would you like to?
Sure. The, um, just a little background, American Legal is doing our codification and will use the code once it's finished. We, they, they took every ordinance that we have on record, uh, they went through and compared them, made sure any amendments were updated, that's what you're receiving is a codified code. Anything that's not in here, so if you've been a member, or if you can recall an ordinance that was passed, if you don't see it in here, you need to let me know, so that we can pass one or go back and try to find it. But this was every ordinance that I could find on record in the ordinance books.
So we need to tell you if we think something's missing?
If you think there's anything missing, this is the time to do it, and we'll make sure that it gets added. They went through and corrected simple things with no notation, typos, grammatical issues, um, over the years, as we've made amendments, if numbering got skewed, they did all of those corrections, you're not gonna find those noted in here. They sent us their, what they call their legal review, and that is changing anything of substance. So the legal review is what the board has to go and either give them the approval to make the change, not make the change, or direct them to do differently.
And the numbers on the tab indicate what, huh?
The numbers on the tab line up with the number that was on the legal review. So in the front of the book, um, if you'll look at this document. That is their legal review. So everything that they've questioned that they're gonna make a substantial change to, I shouldn't say substantial, but a content-oriented change has a number, so that was just a quick reference, so you could find it.
Number twelve would be?
So you're gonna see the number twelve tab a lot, that was fees. Um, we found out that when ordinances were originally written, fees were indicated in them. Over the years, we've amended fees, but ordinances haven't been amended.
So we've taken all the fees aye, aye, aye.
So the recommendation would be to take the actual dollar amount out of an ordinance and replace it with the fee schedule reference.
C.P. schedule.
So every year when we do the budget, we update our fee schedule, the ordinance would represent that.
Good idea.
And then we don't have to update the ordinance, um, in, I don't know, like twenty-some places every time.
Okay, and like number twenty-five is what?
Twenty-five is public works, purpose and authority.
Okay.
Can we, uh, as a group, can we turn to the first twenty-five in the book? As an example, purpose and authority?
And I've got another copy here. Anybody else want some? So if, if anybody has questions about number item twelve, the fees?
Yeah, that's pretty straightforward. That's pretty straightforward.
So you mentioned twenty-five, so I think you did anyway, because I, I turned here, I only see one tab with twenty-five.
Right, so if you'll look on the twenty-five, um, they'll tell you what they come up, what they say the issue is.
Okay, so is any new general statute wrong?
The general statute has changed? Okay, and it now, and so they're, so they're still asking, is this acceptable in other words? Are we okay with that? Is that what?
Right, so the general, for that one, the general statute, um, listed, is, if you tried to look it up today, would not be correct for that section. So they're asking if they can update that with what they feel is the best reference, general statute. The red print out to the side is where I've sat down and went through it, and with other staff, so there's a lot of, uh, land use stuff in here, leases reviewed it, and that's just, we don't have a problem with that.
But that, is that, your comments are the red ones?
The red ones are mine staff comments.
So you're, you're doing that in anticipation of us saying, voting to approve it and then emailing to them, I guess. You know, this is Commissioner Freeman has mentioned, uh, to us in the past, that the judge wants to see the general statute. Right?
All right.
So we actually went through and looked at, um, any new general statute they've referenced, and made sure that they didn't have a typo that was relevant, and then those are our comments that we filled.
And that, and what Jack mentioned, that just, what it does is really solidifies the fact that that general statute, that we can make our ordinance very simple by saying, refer to the general statute, so it's a, what the person's writing out on the regulation.
And then, uh, Commissioners on, on this document, on page six, I see one reference there to Pitt. Uh, so that would be thirty-nine, those are named. So twelve's the only one that had a duplication?
It wasn't, that's because like twelve was all of the fees, because there's fees mentioned in numerous ordinances.
So item thirty-nine is a good one to bring up, um, and so the, the board can ask the attorney to review it, or you can make a decision on your own. But it is concerning signed regulations, and American Legal gives different cases that has, that have involved signed regulations for review.
We see, uh, we see thirty-nine in the book, um, land usage one forty-four, you're calling that a signed page?
Is that on one thirty-nine? I don't see any mention of the attorney.
There were, American Legal suggests that we have our attorney make a decision on, pretty much if we want to put signed regulations in the ordinance and how we want it written.
Uh, sign, okay, I got you.
Based on the case law that they've given as examples.
Well, Mr. Dowd, I had not seen this until right now, unless otherwise directed, we will make no revisions to your zone code regarding signs.
So what they're pretty much saying is the way we have it written, based on the case laws they presented, may not be the best way. It may not stand up in court and such. So they recommend that this is an area that we have the attorney review and possibly make some changes to. And if not, they're gonna leave it as we have, that they're telling us it might not be the best.
You know, that is actually, that is actually an area that, um, I would like, county-wide, I would like to know more about, sign, signs, because you know, once, once it's out there, it's hard to draw back and correct. Uh, and, and right now, on Highway thirteen, thirty-two, one fifty-eight, we don't have a bit, a lot of sign buildup, um...
Uh, you need a try, how long?
Oh, I was just trying to walk around.
Oh, well, I was just trying to walk around.
But anyway, you know, I, that's something I really don't want to see.
We don't want you to have to pay you.
Today.
Today.
The biggest sign in the county I know of is one over there near corner highway that usually has the five twenty-nine college plan on it.
Yeah, so you're talking about the big billboard sign.
Now, I think regulated by state.
They have different regulations. These are some signs such as if, um. You have a business. Yeah, thank you. Like Brinkley's wanted to put up a big huge sign somewhere or.
That's like all nine.
Lilly International Act is a review of ordinance replacement.
The ones, like, they were talking about this out on one fifty-eight, those are regulated by the state.
And that's the way Lilly International is. Because they would use some of our land and we said, yeah, certainly you can push your, you know, Donnie Harold. Said, yeah, you put Lilly International on charge, you say whatever. But yet, Donnie called back, he had to get some permission through the state and subsequently had to cut the pit to get.
So his, his sign, I familiar with his sign, but his, his sign is regulated by the state, so that would still would affect that.
This, this is the type of sign that Dixie always would have, because they called and asked what were our sign regulations. We really don't have any.
So let's say you had a church and next door was a, or a funeral home, or something, and wanted to put up this big neon sign going off all the time.
Yeah.
In a residential neighborhood or something.
It sounded like it could be something that we might want to, that we could come up with. Or, or do we send it, do we send it to the planning board or something like that?
Planning board in the past, from what I've understood, three minutes, they had yard, they had signs and yard, um, requirements. That's not, I shouldn't say yard, landscaping requirements, and it was never passed. But there is that new law, and I'm not kept up with it, but there is a state law that talks about sign regulation. Because I remember that coming out of Melissa. So that's why I need a little reference, saying, telling you, you need to talk to your attorney, and then the planning board can review it if you'd like, since that is something that they would.
I'm trying to think, when I was on the lab board, it, it came up about.
It did come up. When I was on the planning board one time, I do remember the discussion concerning that. Well, you know, there, I mean, in metropolitan areas, they have a lot of issues with things on buildings and all of like obstructing view. I mean, it's a little bit different in rural areas. But I do know that highways do have regulations or the major.
So what are the zones on the code that says off sign?
It doesn't regulate signs. Only signs that really regulates is the sign that if you are a homeowner, let's just say a bookkeeper, you can put a three by three, what's three by three, three by three sign in your yard.
Didn't say anything about setbacks or anything?
We'd have to make the setbacks, but it, I mean, it can be three by three and have.
Uh, and this is related to the zoning code.
So what, what they're referencing is under land usage, in our list of definitions, we define sign, area of a sign, outdoor advertising signs, temporary signs. So we're saying any kind of these, they just want us to review that and see after looking at the case law, if we still feel that these definitions are suitable, if we want to take this time to make any changes to it. For other places, this has been a popular hot topic thing.
So if we, if we agree with everything, let's say we agree with everything, all of your footnotes, and, and, I mean, you're, you're basically agreeing with what they're saying with your comments. If we agree with you, all except that one section, because we don't have one, basically. We, we could go ahead and say, submit it as is and we'll deal with this one later. That would be an issue with it.
We can deal with it later, um, but it's, it's not going to be immediately later. I mean, it's probably going to be like a year out. And then from this point on, every time we make a modification to our ordinance, we pay them like an annual, um, fee, so.
Annual fee would cover any.
We have a, we have a certain, we have a certain amount of supplements that are within our contract. So like in the future, we just want to be aware, if we're thinking about making changes, that we try to lump them together.
Particularly how we.
And do them kind of all at once, instead of this meeting, let's look at changes.
And not do twelve a year.
In this meeting, so we're just a little more precise.
We don't have any provisions on signs that, uh, in vulgar. Free speech, we'd cover that, wouldn't it? I forgot to say, I remember it's on per inch where, you know, sometimes people put a sign. There's one of them, wasn't vulgar, but there was a sign put up on one fifty-eight that don't buy any swamp land, remember that?
Yeah, that wasn't vulgar though.
That's the closest thing I've seen.
But not, there are some limitation, a lot of places put limitations on or by, I don't know what phrases, by certain.
Certain businesses are already covered with, maybe not their signs, but with where they have to be located, and that is spelled out very plainly in our.
Well, there's a lot of, there's a lot of times that there are things, um, they're play on words and play on phrases to promote a business. I can think of some that I won't, I won't say. I mean, but that, they, they missed the vulgarities, but it's there. The word's not there.
Well, a lot of this, this is, they have a type of situations.
There are a lot of signs that we have, very size.
What?
There are a lot of signs that we have, so it kind of, could that have driven some of this?
I have no idea, but you, you just need to decide how you want to do it, because when's the ninety days up, Melissa?
Uh, we have, we have ninety days. We got this mid-April.
So you all plan to mention this to have pit, uh, if they're going to make a decision.
Well, that's, well, that's what they recommend.
And I think that is a good, that for him to take a look at it, I mean, because he's not illegal.
Well, they're talking about that one area, but if we don't, if we don't have a current sign ordinance, there's nothing for him to look at. It's, it's, do you want to create one?
Well, they also reference, um, the table of permanent uses, and I think when people now refer to certain things, we may say you have to have a sign. So we don't have a signed ordinance. But under a certain type of business, we might mention how their signs should be displayed. Does that make sense?
What do you mean, going forward if, if we had an ordinance? There probably don't, smaller private projects don't really have to have a sign, restriction of order.
Right.
And that's, and that's not even going during a general statute. That's if we came up with a situation where something was, uh, offensive, we could address it.
I'd, I'd agree with him. I'd, I'd say we, we don't need more regulations for this. And it's all something being offensive and that's, and a little recent.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you, I think you would be unsuccessful from this board. If somebody put, let's say somebody put up a sign that was no doubt, a hundred out of a hundred people said it was vulgar, had curse words in it or whatever, I don't think this board, I don't think. If, if you didn't have an ordinance, and I'm not trying to, I, I agree with you, build a regulation, but if you don't, you didn't have an ordinance, what are you going to rely on to address it? All you could do is just make a statement from the board that, um, or send a letter to the, to the business or send a letter to the individual.
I was thinking when we were talking about on the planning board, it was concerned about things near schools, um, that might be a non-appropriate, but I can't remember all the, I can't remember all of the ins and outs. But I know it kind of is, you know, when you start, it's got too weedy. You know what you mean?
Well, it looks, did y'all talk, Melissa, about the US Code, forty-seven, the US Code two oh one? Where it says, not to the table of permanent use.
Which number is that?
Uh, number forty-one. The National Telecommunications Act nineteen ninety-six, anybody? Prime early for offensive things.
Right, so what they're referencing in number forty-one, again, is where we just not kept up with in our ordinance, how acts and stuff have changed. So our ordinance still references the Federal Telecommunications Act of ninety-six.
And the new one is what?
That, that's the last one.
So, and then, but that one, um, what they recommend is that they'll update the reference by adding where it's been codified.
There's no break?
Right, if you go to the general, I mean, if you go and try to pull up that act, you're not going to find it because it's been codified into a different section.
And I, I made a mistake. When it does have a home occupation signs, it should be standalone, not to exceed three by three print area. Lighting for such signs shall be shielded so as not to interfere with the joint property owners or traffic traveling the public highway. That's what it says now.
I, I can't remember that, because people did not want to have a neon sign going off all night long, which are, you know, because they, they can be powerful enough to light up a long area if it's a home business.
State police community in Sunbury, there's an ATM there, and there's not a house immediately connected to it. But, um, I mean, and that's not a sign, even if it incorporates its own signage, you've got, it's open twenty-four hours a day. It's, it's lit up and it creates traffic. I know that's not the exact sign scenario we're talking about, but I was sitting here thinking, you know, where is there a sign that could be a nuisance to somebody? And again, there's not a house right this, you know, right there. I mean, there's, is a business there and they gave permission to put it there. But that's getting awfully close to, you know, to residential. And without, and without an ordinance, you know, we couldn't have refused it if there had been a house there, could we have refused it?
And signs are excluded from setbacks?
Yeah, because that one had a setback, that's not a setback, right there in the road. But I think there's a lot of piece of property they could find to put one on in Sunbury.
Uh, actually, they had a dispute with the service station near corner.
Yeah, but see, it's at Fred Blanchard's.
Yeah, right, it was there. They had a little dispute.
Okay, um, I'll be frank, I did not take time to study this this time. I did not realize what was going to come up today. Can we put it on, do we have a, we have a.
I would like, personally, I would like to take care of it where Melissa leaves, because she has been the one who has worked with them. And so we can have another meeting, but like I said, she's been the one who has gone over this. This has been her project, okay?
Hold on.
Hold on, but no, you know, I, I, and I always do my homework, but I just did not do this today, for the day.
Make recommendations on it, pretty much in line. I'm not sure that, for the sign issue, I think we've about had that. I have pit, uh, and kind of, kind of decided immediately for more signs.
Well, that's fine. I'm not taking it to him yet, because for case law they presented for the number of times in our ordinance, we have little sign references, we're going to get a bill from him, um, you know, for, for that. So if we, if we feel that we want to update it now, we can have him review it. We can definitely approve it as it is and come back to it in a year.
Well, if we have him review it, if we have him review it, we've got to come back here and vote on it.
Right.
So there's time like that. So I will, I'm prepared to, to take the integrity of the time that Melissa spent on it, the recommendations of the, of the people, the attorneys who reviewed it, that just have knowledge. If you record, um, at some, at some point in the near future, we might want to talk about that, what is it, thirty? The sign.
Sure enough.
If we might just talk about it again. I don't think we have, I don't think we have any abuses or nuisances or anything like that. But again, uh, to agree with Commissioner Felton, I'm not big on adding more regulations.
So like I said, most of their stuff was very straightforward.
And I have read that before. I just had to alter and read the whole thing.
Item thirty, I do need the board to look at that specifically in this direction on.
That's noise.
That is under the noise, and there's specifically, we, under half thirty, that's section ninety-two point four one B.
Yes, that honking of horns has been seen as a example of free speech.
They're bound to be an expressive.
Deciding of any horn or signal device of any automobile, motorcycle, bus, or other vehicle while not in motion, except as a dangerous signal, if another vehicle is approaching apparently out of control or if in motion only as a dangerous signal, creation by means of any such signal device or any unreasonable loud or harsh noise, and assigning such devices for an unreasonable period of time.
So that's an obvious rule of conduct. So basically what that is, NC State wins the national championship and state named it outside of those home. But the last part, we keep you from being able to ever enforce it because it says for an unreasonable period of time, right, Ray?
Yeah.
You would never, you'd never be able to enforce it.
And so they say, okay, that's it.
Well, I mean, we could deal with that when we come to it, but, uh. Yeah, well, the, so to be from the negative side. I'm going to say this word, dog. My neighbor Dog gives me a problem in barking, so to pay him back, I'm going to go out and do my free speech, and two o'clock in the morning, I'm going to go along with his free speech for thirty minutes and we'll go back inside, drink a cup of coffee, come back out fifteen minutes, fourteen minutes. So there you.
That comes under the conviction of statute.
That's right, it comes under the pursuit of.
So their, their legal team would recommend that we just take that out.
Yeah.
That we remove it based on other case law. It's probably not going to stand up despite we enforce it.
What we have to understand too is that when two attorneys get up here, we can say, Judge, I, I'd like to visit, uh, case number such and such, such and such, and then, and there was a ruling on that case, right, Ray? And that's going to take, that's going to take a lot of weight. So they're recommending removing it. I, I would implore that this is for, is based on my issues we've dealt with in the past. And, you know, we have a company in that situation. I would, I would be in favor of removing it, because I know it's court peak. We have a situation where people have done some things.
Well, it's not removing the whole ordinance, just that one item without horn honking.
Yeah, but I'm saying, you see, there are people who.
While not in motion, so they're just standing still and just continue to be.
They're going outside, but we know, we know people that, people that, you'd be surprised. God, I put a house on, go out, go to church.
A lot of people do that.
Oh, yeah, like, yeah.
Or is out here. There's, there's some still.
Okay, but wouldn't it, to play on any radio, but, I mean, it, you know, I'm like the king of animals. I was about freaking along, continuing to show disturb the comfort. We talk about animal noise, we talk about music from, you know, your musical instruments or your flute box or whatever. I have people pass by my house, I can hear the music flailing.
Before they get there?
Yes.
We've had situations, you, present here talking about, uh.
We have. But now, I don't know if we've ever had one that's come in here and was talking about blowing a horn.
I don't know about that, but.
I mean, if the car's not, and people go down the horn. And you, NC State there, I, there, right, down Hillsborough Street and everything else, they're not sitting there, maybe. I was just looking to see how it is.
And it does say standing still, doesn't it?
Yeah, it says.
The thing about moving in, in, in.
While not in motion.
Ten seconds, that's not gonna be bothered me. It's just gonna be ten seconds down the road.
Says while not in motion. But it's creation of any unreasonable loud, disturbing noise in vain is prohibited. Noise of certain character, intensity, and duration to, they definitely help secure welfare of individuals is prohibited. Because it'd be a nuisance. If we took that item, we still could enforce law if it's a nuisance.
Let me, let me give you the, the.
Okay.
Um, I've been a good man. We've got a neighbor, uh, that's a pretty close apartment. And, um, they've got a problem with, with their, um, uh, security interest of the car. Guess what?
Twenty-sixty?
Car's standing still. And all of a sudden, that security horn, somebody touch it more, and it automatically goes off. Guess what? Uh, 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 and it happens to all of us. Many times where you go, you go, uh, go get your keys, the door's locked, you can't get on the door, and all of a sudden you, your alarm goes off. And, uh, they refuse to fix it. And, I mean, you know, this guy works second shift and, and it's constant. And this automatic security alarm goes off. I mean, these are things that are realistic to come out. And people won't fix it. And guess what? That's the issue.
And I agree that would be a nuisance if it was next door to me or if I was new in it. Uh, but it says the following acts, among others, are declared to be loud, disturbing noises in violation of this. So, I mean, it says that we have not listed everything. When it says the following acts, among others. So we had talked about music, the light language and raunchy language. Uh, we talked about, um, animals, motorcycles, and all vehicles, I, so either passive loaded or is enough to create light rating. Riding or riding or all noises. Now, we could be a lot of them. But if we took that item, could not go on the other, I mean, a car not in motion. We got a car in motion. Do we, we need to be that specific is what I'm saying.
That becomes a problem when we get so specific.
Why?
I said that becomes a problem, if and when we get so specific.
I think common sense would tell us if it was a recurring item all the time, that it would be under the law, against the law.
Back to the, I mean, the title of what we're talking about is enforcement. It gets back to enforcement. And what can you, what can you do? What can you make stick? What can you cite somebody on? You know, what can you, will it allow you to stop the, the issue?
All of us have set off our alarm system, but it's not every night.
I pulled up the case that it's referencing, and that specific case, um, there was an organization in the city that had put up a sign that said pretty much like honk if you agree.
Mm-hmm.
You know, honk to show support.
Mm-hmm.
And that, and that kind of stuff. So there's numerous cases that are quoted in here, uh, about honk statutes. And at what point they're considered limiting of free speech and.
That's a nuisance right there.
Yeah.
That's citing.
I agree.
Well, what is it's pleasure for?
Um, Jim, I would, I would say let's, uh, let's leave it in there. You know, recognize it that. And we have dealt with that, but it, it provides a limitation. Probably about as God is only, you know, what your parents can't do. I think one lawyer can do this. Obviously, we let it be around now.
Okay, it's right at the end. Right?
I'm, uh, I'm toss up on it.
I can really see both, both angles. And I don't know that. The decision is, is, uh, is more hard to keep, keep it all there together.
Commissioner Felton?
I'll see whether it's gonna make any difference one way or another.
Commissioner Oren?
I have, which has been reviewed by the law team, I have a tendency to go with what law team says.
Or if they remove it, right?
And especially when they can cite case law. When it's up here, that's what the guy in the black robe is one, is one of them.
I kinda think it's covered, we are covered by the first statement. And I'm their lawyer, but anyway, among the of, uh, the following acts, among others, I think it's probably got wide. And I kinda agree with Jai that they think it doesn't stand scrutiny test or a smell test. We might need to remove it. But I, it's, um, you know, I can say it both ways. I really can. Especially if it's in my neighborhood. You gotta think personally. I have a neighbor who shoots off guns at night, about two AM in the morning. So.
That's not very pleasant to break up with gunshots.
And he's supposed to be talking.
Again, on moving forward to.
And this isn't an end-all.
Right.
I mean, so if issues started to occur, you could go back and look at an appropriate way to address those issues.
And if, uh, you know, when we're talking about signs, my, my thinking on the, on the signs part was, once it's done and we don't have an ordinance, you can't, you can't deal with it. You can deal with it going forward. But this is one that wouldn't, wouldn't be like the sign thing. We're talking about honking a horn. So, you know, we have an event, the event ends. So whenever we put an effective date, if we do, put it in, it'll take care of that. But I don't, I don't see that as a, as something we couldn't revisit easily. If you understand what I'm saying there on that. I mean, this is not, this is something that is, it's an event, and then it's an event again. So we create an ordinance and it has a date on it and we deal with it. Whereas the sign is in the ground. And it's, I can't continue the event twenty-four hours a day for an effective date. So, uh, again, I would, I would lean toward what the, these attorneys, you know, what they were saying there. I, I wanna, to Nat, back to Natalie's comment about Melissa's, Melissa's, uh, project. And she's done a good job on it and, and we might see it closed before.
Maybe Lawrence comes.
Yeah, and your recommendation is, Roger Jordan.
Well, I reviewed it, um, and Lisa's looked at it and, and such. So our recommendation would, would be that we agree with them and we go ahead and remove it. If issues occur in the future, we write something that would address those specific issues. But as it's written now, it's just kind of in there for fluff.
There's a new, there's a new issue coming up. It's never come up before. We don't know what it is. And it might be in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty-one, but it does, we'll have to deal with that.
So I think part of their concern is that's written a little vague. So even if that issue would come up, you're probably, that one statement's not gonna hold up in court. But it may cause issues because of previous cases.
I'll let me sure if it's coming out there, it's gonna make them stop. And, uh, you know, that's just the thing. All of these things never hit the court. And I usually issue a citation because, uh, uh, once you get because it's out there, they stop it and that's what you're looking for. But, you know, for me, I, I just hate to take something out that's.
Now, that's not to say that the sheriff can't still respond to those calls and can't go out there and do that. This is just saying.
Because he can say that it's a consideration about, it's a nuisance. It's not saying people would be alive by here.
The chances of, of law enforcement also writing a citation on that call is nil. You know, they're gonna address it and ask them to stop, and they're gonna give them fifteen minutes or whatever to leave or, and then that's it. Other come back into there, then we write a particular citation or warrant for first instance.
Okay, I'm, uh, so the question before us is, do we accept the recommendations made by the, um, legal people? And, and with comments, uh, after being reviewed by our staff, as is, so they can move forward? Or do we make, uh, pick, uh, change this one?
Well, I think that's what Melissa was asking for, this, I hear it when she was out of.
Yeah, I mean, that was, that was the recommendation of staff.
Yeah, I, I would not be in favor, but whether the majority of the people accept it, we're fine with it.
Um, Natalie and the right, um, meaning to make a motion?
Yes.
Chair, motion. I'll, I'll make a motion. Um, having heard my fellow commissioners and listened to their comments, on this, uh, project, project here, what do you wanna call your project?
Cock.
Constellation. I make a motion that we accept the recommendations from Melissa and the people that she reviewed with. And, um, pertaining to the fact that it was looked at by a group of attorneys, that we accept this codification presented before us this day. Uh, with an effective date. An effective date?
I just need approval to send back the comment.
Okay, all right. My motion is that we accept the document before us to be sent back, uh, complications to be made to our codification laws.
Good, I am very.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that motion.
I think yes.
No, as is. I'm making my as is.
As is, okay.
Okay, a motion is before us to approve the, um, the codification of our ordinance with the recommendations made by the legal and team and the occurring by our staff. That's the motion. Okay, do I have a second to that? That we'll do it as is? I mean, that's why the, it's by the recommendations made. That's leave, the taken item.
Yes, that's to remove the divestment.
Uh-huh.
For to remove it, yes, I'll second that motion.
That was my question. What, you just told me that one. I don't know.
No, he talks about the entire.
Tire, tire document.
So I wanna make sure I have it right. So you're saying that you're given approval, um, for all of our comments in red to be sent back to their legal team?
Yes.
Okay.
Tire document.
And what about the fifth one?
I think that was decided we're gonna leave as is and then maybe in the future.
If it comes up in the future.
We may want to look at a, a signed ordinance.
Okay, yes. Okay, is everybody clear on what we're voting on?
One more question, man. What I mentioned earlier, is this height of this spectrum. We have, ordinance say one thing and in reality we're doing another.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, a while ago, one of the corrections in here is.
All the fees there.
All the fees, it says C, C five.
No, but no, he's talking about the way it's divided, not the amount. And the amount anyway is set by, you know, statute.
Isn't that, isn't that, isn't that a separate issue though?
Well, our, our ordinance does how, how the fees should be, um.
Rethought.
So, page, page you love.
Yeah, but, but does it say equally divided? In this, in this?
The total revenue shall be divided equally among the fire departments.
So that means if there's five fire department fees, you're a fifth, which is not how it's currently being done.
I was just, Sunbury, Sunbury gives two parts.
Right.
Four, four of all gets seventeen percent, Sunbury gets thirty-two percent.
Five is not very good.
Court.
I can give you my.
They consider Corpike a substation.
Okay. But that's part of it. But at the Fire Department Association meeting, it was agreed, the city had come to give it, agreed to do it on five and a half shares. But Sunbury's giving a share and a half, which would mean each department would get eighteen point eighteen percent. And Sunbury would be getting twenty-seven point seven seven percent. That's not the way it was done deal. And without going back through the commissioner meetings from ten, fifteen years ago, nobody's been done. Uh, within two thousand, and this, our people are fast. Like I want to back through the minutes, but I can't tell you how it was, how it was included or who approved it.
But Billy, with, uh, for clarification, the Fireman's Association.
Recommend.
We recommended the Fireman's Association is made of a.
Membership department.
Gets in.
I'd, I'd doubt that you'll ever find any minutes to support that.
Did you ever talk about that very well?
But ultimately, it rests with you to make the decision.
Yeah, and what, and what is fair is exactly what Billy said. Is that Sunbury get that for us.
So we're, so we're still in discussion on my motion.
Right.
All right, so, um.
Yeah, I'll just add, your, your motion was approved for.
Right, and that's not in a part of the things we will look at and make changes, but he brought it up that that's something that, or in the ordinance that it's not being done.
So.
Ordinance and practice didn't require conflict.
Right.
So.
I would rather see us contact fire department, uh, chief, and we can, uh, talk about, or make changes.
Well, that's fine. I have no problem with that.
But that doesn't.
It's being approved this way right now with that motion. It's being approved by the state.
Well, this, we're approving the codification and the changes in that.
No, you're, no.
But just clearing it up, really.
Right, so we're, we're.
We're not doing.
Order individually.
Not individually. This is putting them all together. Once this is approved, they will send back our final draft. And you will approve that code as the law. Anything written prior to that will be superseded.
Right.
Just as the new law.
So this is it. So we have two options. We can correct that statement that we know is in conflict before we approve this. Or we can approve it and that can be our first supplement of next year. Um, which will cost is, is the.
But I'll make my, my change.
But, but which is, the cost is already.
Without talking to the minister.
We're gonna have a cost of an annual fee if we don't have to request any.
We, we pay them an annual subscription fee and then we pay like per page this episode. So this would be a very minimal cost. It's not like we're looking at twenty pages. If we, if we were considering the signed ordinance now, we would want to do that because that would change numerous pages. It'd change a lot of stuff. It'll be a little more costly. This is gonna change one area. It's not gonna be a big cost, but Commissioner Felton is absolutely correct. But stuff like this has to be fixed if what's written is not how we practice.
Well, I read it. It's a bit bad.
So, so, or you agree that if I, we're in discussion, you're agreeing that if I request that, that portion of this to not be part of my motion? And that would be the proper thing because I, I, I agree, we don't want, we don't want. Then that would be the proper thing, because I, I, I agree, we don't want, we don't want to cut any of our fire departments' legs out from under them without having, giving them an opportunity to defend their situation.
I, I think it's, I think it's separate, I, I'm too aware of you to deal with your motion.
Well, it's in conflict.
Well, I would, I would...
Probably aware of it, but that's something you can deal with.
I would be in favor of keeping your motion, approving it as is. And we'll just make a note that we need to review this section for potential changes. And then we'll start, when, whenever we figure out the proper way to go about reviewing it. If that's a meeting with fire departments, the tax office, assesses the fee, whoever, then we work on how we're gonna resolve it.
And it could be as simple as, uh, sending to the village, fire chiefs or whoever, and that statement saying, this, this is not how it's done. Explain how you've come up with the distribution of jam.
Well, where do ones distribute? We're, we're doing it from, from tradition. We're doing it the same way every year.
But how do they get thirty, not say thirty percent?
Yeah, but, but...
How do they get thirty percent?
They've got some minutes at some point in time, from, probably, like he said, ten plus years ago.
And I got feeling it's probably when Jas Pierce was on the board, because he was a fire chief.
So, where, where do we, do we send the money to each fire department?
Just send them by, pull out, pull out two installments a year.
Uh, I don't, I don't understand how it's happened, how they can get...
Well, it's just something that was decided.
And the commissioners voted on it and that's what was done. And that's what's done, and we've never updated the ordinance.
But, but you're talking about, where's the justification for that type of distribution?
Well, no, I'm saying that if the county sets a check to each fire department, equals amount, how does Sunbury end up at thirty percent?
They don't, they don't get any...
That was needed.
That's what we're talking about.
They don't get any...
But it's not equal.
So, you all are doing it...
So, it's already a conflict.
You all are doing it with...
We're doing what the commissioners voted on ten plus years ago. And if it was ten years ago, you said that was in two thousand?
This was, this was ordinance was passed in, in June fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, so then since then, the commissioners made a decision to change this formula, but the ordinance was never updated.
Change the ordinance.
Didn't change the ordinance, because court pick hasn't been around that long.
Yeah, so, basically, uh, would you change it? Is that gonna be, gonna be fair?
It's gonna be less money for Sunbury, more money for the other four departments.
But is that gonna be fair?
I can identify, depending on which fire department you question.
I don't believe that.
But see, court view is not standalone department, correct?
But why don't you all, what, what, all you all have to do is do what the ordinance says.
But they're in conflict.
They're in conflict with the commission, yes, we can, years ago.
I can, we guess, we don't know.
Yeah, because we can't see it.
But we did address it, as far as...
Oh, yeah.
We, I don't think a decision like now is appropriate.
Oh.
Only address is called the fire department, and they'll know, hey...
But when you vote on this to be codified, you can also vote to change it that day, can't you? So, when you vote to codify this, it's just like any other public hearing, you can vote to change language in it that day.
Me.
Right. So, that discussion can, well, that discussion though can take place, because we send this back tomorrow, let's just say the motion passes, we send it back tomorrow. How long would it be whenever they send it back?
Um, I think they have...
Is it a month, a month, is it that long?
No, they have, they have a good bit of time that they'll send back, um, our final publication.
So, then you have plenty of time then to talk with the fire departments in between that time. So, let's just say it's, it's May August or September. They, each fire department could have their say-so. And then when we have that public hearing to actually pass the, this codification, on that day, you could make a recommendation to change that section to whatever it is. And then we send it back to American Legal and they update it.
Because you see, we also have to send them, we just updated animal control, that's not in there. We agreed that we're splitting out, um...
Junkyard.
The junkyard and the motor vehicles, so they'll, they're, I've already let them know, they'll revise this into two different chapters. We'll have a chapter for each then. So, they've gotta make those changes. And then, this is gonna be just a simple text thing. And it may be that, that we, everybody's in agreement that how we're doing it is how it was intended to be done. And we just write that to match what we're doing. And, and it's simple.
Yep. Oh, and if it's not, if, if everybody says, no, that's not the way it was meant to be, we fix it the way it's meant to be. Okay, I think the whole question is, the question for us is to approve the codification of these ordinances with the...
With the entire document.
The entire document at this time. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, Harris, five zero. And so, it'll come back to us, we'll have to have a public hearing.
Give it to fire department, and ask them, take a look at that and see what kind of recommendation they give.
Really, I, we don't own our fire departments. Thank you to each other.
We don't. I mean, I just, what I was, was reading this, I was living on the first piece of it, that was the first thing that jumped out at me.
Well, I read where the tabs were. I'm sorry, I did, I, a long ago I said I didn't read it, I didn't read the entire thing, I read where the tabs were, I, I, you know, I got kind of caught short in time.
We need to have...
Get out your calendars.
We need to have two weeks, I will present the, uh, initial budget on May the twenty-first meeting. Saying that we will need to have an additional work session to discuss. And, and then typically, we have done it on that Tuesday and Thursday.
Okay, you put it's probably...
On the twenty-first.
I'll be up to the night.
And my recommendations can be Tuesday, starting at two until, I guess, five.
Can you make that?
And then Thursday evening if necessary.
Natalie, um, go again.
On twenty-first.
The twenty-second, from two until five, and then the twenty-fourth if needed that night. Unless you prefer to do it during working hours again.
You go and sit down.
I'll sit down the dates, we just need to confirm them today, so Melissa can also advertise it.
Okay, so the idea is to have work sessions for budget on May twenty-second from two to five, and May twenty-four, to get my close to my birthday night. May twenty-four in, at nine.
Well, Brenda might not want me to come on May twenty-fourth.
She anniversary?
It's your anniversary.
My wife's birthday is twenty-third.
That's a busy week, everybody's celebrating.
Yeah, you gotta learn how to birthday.
I told my students, I said, you owe me, I owe them about one.
He said the twenty-fourth is, if needed, right?
Mm-hmm.
It may not be needed.
Right.
And this, the workshops are due for what, fire department?
For work session for the budget.
And we're looking at that, and when we say in the evening, does that mean five o'clock or what?
That's fine with me, um, don't know if my son's still be playing baseball that night, I mean, that week, so...
Be it on the, that, on the twenty-fourth, when you say in the evening, does that mean five o'clock or what?
Five o'clock's fine with me.
Five o'clock's fine with me.
The twenty-fourth.
If we find big, I probably won't be.
Well, we can make it, you, you take our idea, we can make it, um...
We can do it the twenty-third.
We can do it the twenty-third.
That's my wife's birthday.
But it's anniversary, his wife's birthday, I mean, how do you...
Well, the twenty-fourth is not good for me.
Oh, it's not?
Yeah. I can't, I can't, I'm asking for a conversation.
Okay. Okay, so, Miss and Brenda's birthday.
Um, everyone's here, I can't even get through with it on the twenty-second.
I, I can do it on the, I can, if you want the twenty-third, I can do it if we, I mean, if we're out of here by seven.
You said two o'clock, once it make it, one o'clock, and then we take care of it.
So, with me, I'm gonna be here all day anyway.
It makes no difference to me, like, early to start from, start at nine.
Okay, how about if we do, we set it up at one five, on the twenty-second, and if, at that, but we got advertised on it. So, we need to pick a date.
You cannot go to the June.
Yeah.
You can't go to June because I have to have it maxed in for the six.
You're not advertising a, you're just advertising a start time.
Okay.
So, if you're convinced that you just want to do it all in one day, you don't have to have a second day.
Yeah, but most of, Jordan can, and he has the church.
Thursday.
With, or Tuesday, don't you, don't you have about... Okay, we can...
But if he said it's a Saturday, we have to be finished way before Saturday.
I started, said we'd all be grand dead. And we might all need to get a prayer service. Okay, well, if we do, if we say, but, okay, worst case scenario, we don't get it done in that timeframe. So, don't we have a, have a knowledge, have a time?
Um, well, if you're gonna, if that's on Tuesday, the next earliest time you can do it would be like Friday. I mean, so at that, worst case, if you schedule it starting at one o'clock on Tuesday, and you know you've got until seven, if you don't get finished, you can call...
A reset.
You can call a special meeting for Friday.
But that's my birthday. I'm not coming here to set such a budget on my birthday.
I'm gonna be uptown.
But...
I'm gonna be...
I see, twenty-eight is Memorial Day. We could go to the next Tuesday. But that's getting kind of close to, and, and Melissa's not gonna be here on twenty-second, so we have to be... We'll just go to one seven and Friday, so we can get it all done. And about, um, I would just do it that way. How about that, guys?
Could we use, could we use the emergency meeting room?
Yeah, and she said we could.
She said special.
Not an emergency, no.
But special.
Special.
You have to get forty-eight hour, eight hour, no?
That's why she said it would be Friday.
Okay, well, we do...
Well, technically, if we do it at seven o'clock.
But that's still Thursday night, so...
Okay.
And so, people can't be here.
It could be Thursday evening, but...
But we could do Friday morning, Friday afternoon.
Maybe, I'm, I'm not here Tuesday either, but I thought I'd take care of it.
And it may be that we just agree with, as long as we have a forum.
Yeah, we are doing care of it, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so the twenty-second at one, starting at one o'clock?
One o'clock. And we, if we had to have an honor, we'll do a special meeting. And we have forum, we have forum, but lunch breaks could be here. What a horrible week y'all put. Just a way...
We have a meeting on the twenty-first.
Yeah.
But they have to, there's something about this calling in, what is the rule like? They can't vote on...
We don't, we don't have any rules on calling in.
Okay, I know some places do.
Yeah.
But they can't vote, but they can do kind of...
Part of that law. Forum and...
Okay, anything else, because of the calls?
I'm just, I'm gonna make a motion that, uh...
Sounds good, so the motion's been made, it's seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.